Check, check, check. Check, check, check. Check, check, check. Check, check, check. Okay, friends. I'm still setting up. Ah, I'm still setting up, so bear with me. Okay, where is the... I guess we got 10 minutes. I have, I have some material that's kind of funny. It's kind of funny. Um, come on, I want to leave that. I need to open. Mm-hmm. There it is. Okay, this audio. Audio's good. Okay, we're getting set up, friends. We're getting... We're getting set up for the big Zoom thing tonight. It is so ridiculous out there. Everything is ridiculous. It's like ridiculous turned up to 11. I mean, everything that's going on from, uh... It's really been four years of ridiculous since Russiagate, you know, that big crazy stupid thing that turned out to be nothing at all. And it was easy to tell that it was nothing at all. Uh, anybody, you know, you just fact-check it. You spend 10 minutes trying to fact-check the story all along, and the story broke down every time. So it didn't take a genius. I'm not, I don't think I'm the smartest guy in the room, you know? But, uh, it's easy to debunk. So we've been in like full nutso mode for four years, and, uh, it's just only gotten super worse since this COVID thing. So people are like, "Yeah." It's like, there's nobody catching the flu in Florida in July when it's 100 degrees outside. It's just not happening. So use your common sense, people. Don't get freaked out. The media's trying to get you freaked out over nothing. There's nothing going on, COVID, very little going on right now. So people, I hope everybody chills out. How much time? Eight minutes. I gotta try. It's just so nuts. I can't even... If I, I... There's certain things that I shouldn't actually tell you about, but they're very interesting and really kind of bizarre. And I really wish I could talk about them. But this is the kind of thing, I'm trying to like learn discretion, you know, at age 60. All right, wait a minute. Um... But there's... It's just crazy stuff going on behind the scenes. Trust me, it is nuts. All right, so while that, while we're waiting for that, let me try to bring... Bring this one over like this. Come on, take off. You're not... Not. Okay. So let's try to go through this really quick. Let's make it big. All righty, I gotta, I gotta see myself. How we doing? Say hi in the chat. Give me a thumbs up. Thumbs up the video. If you can, please. I want to see some, I want to see some, some likes. We got one like, seven playbacks. We were up to three simultaneously. Great, I'm glad somebody's watching. Um... Okay, let me just check really quick. Nothing going on. All right, so what do we got? We got tonight's meeting. So we're gonna... We're gonna rescind the special restrictions. We're gonna rescind the special restrictions. Let me see if I can blast through this, okay? So first of all, um, it's a public hearing of the Endicott Board of Trustees, July 20th, 2020, 7:00 PM. That's happening in six minutes. Local law repealing the local law. Making recycling facilities a permitted use in industrial zones, okay? So, okay, here's what I'm gonna discuss in my comments, if I can get through it. This is my practice run, talking to you right now. So prior to, May 7th of 2020, there was an express prohibition. I gotta, I gotta do something. I gotta pay attention to what you're seeing because, uh, I haven't been, and I'm just trying to zoom through this. Zoom, we're all zooming tonight. Zoom, 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 zoomy, zoom, zoom. Oh, come on. OBSs. You just have to abandon all of your layers at some point and just start over. I tend to be a pack rat with my OBS setup. And, uh, I can turn... I can turn this off. Hold on. No, that's not right. Okay. All righty. I'm gonna try to blast through this. Let's blast off, okay? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about, so prior to, to May 7th... Prior to May 7th... 2020, there was an express prohibition on incinerators. If you listen to them, if you listen to Jeff Platsky, your brain's gonna be like... You're gonna be thinking, you're gonna be confused. If you're listening to mainstream media, you're gonna be confused because they speak in gobbledegook, okay? They speak in public relations gobbledegook. So this is, this is the plain English version. This is the Bill Houston talking to you straight up, plain English version, okay? Prior to May 7th, there was a clear and unambiguous express prohibition on incinerators in the village of Endicott in any zone. And here it is. Can we make this big? Can you see this? So here's the list. You don't see the instant, this is right from the village code. You look at the list, SP for special permit, P for permitted use. There's nothing like an incinerator anywhere on this list. I've showed this to you a bunch of times. I'm gonna keep doing it. So look, uses, this is from the law, section three, the code, section 300-22.3 uses. It says, "Uses not listed are expressly prohibited." Expressly prohibited, okay? So in order to put an incinerator in the village of Endicott, they had to change the zoning. This is plain English. They had to change the zoning to remove the express prohibition. Do you get that? Forget all the gobbledegook that you've heard coming out of various people's mouths and the mainstream media. This is, this is the plain English version, okay? Mayor Linda Jackson repeatedly called this adding special restrictions on recycling facilities. She wanted to protect the village by adding special restrictions. This is like having, uh, thieves in the neighborhood breaking into homes, and then you want to add special restrictions on your house to make it more thief-proof, and you take off the locks and you leave the windows open. That's called adding special restrictions on thieves, when you remove the locks and open up the windows. You make it easy for them. We had an express prohibition. They removed it. She called it adding special, or we had a prohibition. And she called it removing the prohibition, removing the wall, removing the barrier, removing the locks on the door. She called that adding special restrictions. So this is something that I found. I'm trying to get through this super fast. We got two minutes. The 2010 New York State rechargeable battery recycling law made it illegal for a local municipality... Am I a little hot? Check, check, check. To add special restrictions on, on rechargeable... I'm sorry, on battery recycling facilities. I think it's specifically rechargeable battery recycling facilities. It's preempted by a 2010 law. So there's two, first of all, it doesn't even make any sense on its face. It's PR gobbledegook, but it also happens to be illegal. The state takes preemption on recycling, on rechargeable battery recycling facilities. So we couldn't add special restrictions on recycling facilities, even if we wanted to. It's not legal. So that's really funny. That's the main thing I wanted to show you. There's the law, uh, environmental conservation law. They usually call it ECL, section 27, 1811, state preemption. Go read it, look that up. Uh, the protest petition, there shouldn't be any building. So here's the deal, friends. Depending on what happens here tonight... We could get a building permit like by Wednesday. So this is serious business, what's happening here tonight. This is a serious thing, and I'm glad that you are all tuned in. You decided to tune into the Bill Houston podcast to get the straight story, okay? So I'm gonna try to keep on going. Uh, we gotta wait for that protest petition. So far, the engineering firm, Delta, I think it is, Delta Engineering, they haven't produced a report yet. So we don't even know if the protest petition is valid or not. We got no idea. So, let's put a timeout on submitting this law. I think this law should timeout, and it should become nullified. Even without the protest petition, the 5-7 vote failed 3 to 2 due to, there was two different supermajority requirements. One was from the protest petition. Guess what? You don't even need the protest. Why are you gonna chase a quarter down the street when you've already got a quarter in your pocket? This is the quarter in the pocket. GML, General Municipal Law, section 239M subsection 5. Go read it. There was an additional supermajority requirement due to the changes that came back on the 239 review from the county. On the, on just the zoning change, the 239 review came back with half a page of suggested changes. Guess what? The village ignored it. The vote failed 3 to 2. There was a supermajority requirement. This is why I think they're undoing this thing tonight, is because they know they screwed up. And there's another discussion about recycling facilities. This is being appealed with the zoning board. No Burn Brooms Attorney. I gotta keep an eye on this. Ah... No Burn Brooms Attorney wrote about this. In a letter on May 7th to the village board, and I think I've got it quoted down here. But basically, this is, uh... This is the pa, this is half of, look at this. This is all of the suggestions that came back on the 239 review. And that's signed by Frank Evangelisti. And they ignored it. So, right? So there's two reasons. They had to undo it. They have to undo this because they know it failed. It failed 3 to 2. There was a supermajority requirement. They failed to get it. This thing is dead. This, nobody's talking about this. Jeff Platsky's not. This facility is already dead, and nobody knows it because this zoning thing changed. This whole charade tonight is to try to fix their screw-up. That's what this is about. They screwed up. The other thing is, so Claudia Bramer, God bless her, she is a fantastic attorney, and I don't say that very often about many people, okay? Claudia Bramer did this genius thing. She filed an appeal with the zoning board. It's gonna be in 10 days from tonight. It's gonna be on the 30th, okay? ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals. And basically, she says, even after this zoning change, even after you change the zoning to allow recycling facilities within an industrial zone, guess what? An incinerator is still not a permitted land use, even after your bogus law. Genius. God bless you, Claudia Bramer. Hats off to you. Genius. So this thing is already dead. Nobody even knows it yet. They're trying to undo their screw-up. So whatever happens tonight, you know, whether they... Here's what people suspect, okay? Let me, I gotta check on this. I don't think anybody's talking yet. Wow.
Seminar, we received a lot of valuable information. They will be sending us a complete recording of all speakers to anyone who's interested to hear it. I attended a press conference at Round Top for the opening of the overlook. While I was there, I talked to Executive Garner and our plans for the next possible COVID shutdown. Hopefully, we will not have to completely go back to square one. I'm afraid we're gonna have a lot of new normals here, and we're gonna just have to learn how to cope while still being safe. We are getting grants for two electric charging stations to be placed in our village parking lot behind the corner drugstore. That's on the corner of 26th and 17th. Because at the seminar I went to, there's gonna be a lot of electric cars and so forth, and this is hopefully going to help us make some money. They will be installed and maintained by our municipal electric department, so the village will not be involved at all. And they got their own grant for it. The planning board approved the variance needed for the sale of nurseries to proceed, so we're happy to hear another business coming back to Endicott. And we were going to have public hearings tonight regarding shutting down Park Street from East Main to Madison because of vehicles not yielding to the right-of-way of fire trucks. And we are also going to end Grant Avenue, where it meets Main Street because of multiple accidents, as, as we were told by the wrecker company. However, our village engineer and the fire and the police departments are discussing alternate measures, so we are not having republic hearings on these. We are not closing those streets. If anybody wants to ask me any questions on this, my email is voemayor@endicottny.com. And the phone number for here at the village is 757-2420. Thank you very much. Now I'd like for the approval of minutes, please.
Make a motion for the minutes. I'll second that.
Can we roll call those?
We might better because we have somebody, because we have somebody on Zoom, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So the approval of minutes, trustee Connectney?
Aye.
Trustee Dorn?
Hi.
Trustee Chapman? Trustee Warner?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, before we go on, I had a question that's on the agenda. Uh, way in the back page is item number 14. Says, "Board member comments." That's something new. What is that?
That was, we voted on that last time because a lot of people wanted to make comments on things that were not on the agenda during the meeting. And since you can't make your own comments under committee reports because that's only for committee reports, this gives you an opportunity to talk about anything you would like to. Any comment on any subject you would like you get to make. And that way, that way everyone gets to voice their opinion, so. That's all. All right, now we'll have trustee comments. So, uh, trustee Connectney, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I'm trying to think. I was at the Round Top opening with my grandchildren, and that was nice. Um, I've been talking with Zach down at North Brewery about opening up the avenue and not really getting a lot of restaurant participation on that. Uh, I have to say, I was in Corning today, and Market Street is closed off for outdoor dining, and it really is quite lovely. I recommend to go down there. The restaurants are amazing. But it just looks so peaceful, too. And they're really trying to support their businesses, which was our intention with Washington Avenue, but, uh, don't know about, so.
But we need to, in order to do that, we need to order some restaurants. Right. That's it. All right. Trustee Dorn, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Uh, I'm not sure if I reported last meeting that I made my first late apartment meeting.
I don't think we talked about it.
And it was, uh, it's a learning experience. There's a lot to understand, and, uh, I'll make sure I make those meetings from now on before I get reported.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
All right, trustee Chapman?
Um, I did a, um, a free webinar, uh, on how solar can benefit the area community. Um, we've been talking about the possibility of putting some solar panels down at the old, um...
Landfill?
The landfill, down by wastewater treatment airport. So I did that, and it's a lot to go into it and look into. They have, um, when they select a site, it has a lot to do with land use, topography, floodplain. Um, they also covered community benefits for long-term revitalization, um, also for jobs, because you need, uh, full-time maintenance people for, for that areas. Also, too, is, um, large scale development can run anywhere between, um, a minimum of $25 million to put these projects in. And some of these projects, too, we're talking about, most of them usually require a pilot because of the money. But that's something that we could still look into and discuss. And that, thank you, I mean, for wanting to be on. But we need to get a committee to look at this. And if anybody else's might be interested in signing up for the committee, I'd be beneficial to the village to look into. Something we can do. We do know we have the land, and we can help hopefully offset some of the costs to the wastewater treatment plant and the water plant in the airport if we can get, uh, solar panels down there to help them. This cost might be a little bit more because there's two types of solar outlet panel out there that has no glare. And that's the type we would probably need.
I would do so with pilots, that would...
Well, they would, yeah, and they would work with the FAA, any companies, but we would have to put all of that into an RFP.
I'm into it.
So I think if we need to get the committee together so we can come up with some benefits and do an RFP. Um, we have a parking authority meeting coming up on July 29th, Wednesday, at 1:00. We're also gonna be discussing the parking spots for the, um, charging stations and also, um, talking about the, uh, that IBM is turning back over to the village. We still have to work out the details of that and get that all set up. Um, just other stuff we've been working on, just a lot been going on. Um, keeping busy.
Good enough. Okay, trustee Warner, do you have any, uh, any like report on?
Yes, uh, I do. Um, on, uh, June 29th, I met with, uh, a phone conference with Bob and Anthony and Roger from Delta Engineering. Roger's the one who's doing the count on the petitions. And, uh, we, I wanted to make sure, so we went over that very carefully with him on how the count actually would happen, where the, where the land actually starts that he's, that he's counting the 100 feet. And then on, uh, the same day, the night, we had that, um, Zoom meeting with Dana Schmier, uh, which was for community leaders. Uh, and then the next day, there was another Zoom meeting by the same man, and that was open to the public to listen to. So why was that that one? And then, um, and then since the, since the last meeting, there was, um, something that happened in Endicott that's never happened in the history of Endicott before. There was a issue that Cheryl got involved with on the internet where she clicked on some... where she clicked on some, something about White Lives Matter. And then there was a big rally next door at the World War I monument. And they met, I think, a couple hours there. They blocked the street out front. And they called for Cheryl and Linda to resign because of that. They had gone on the internet. And so I wanted to ask Cheryl, do you have some comments you want to make about that, so the public knows what the update is on it?
We've made our statements and our comments, and yes, we're taking a workshop and we opened it up to the public. I apologize.
When does that workshop start?
The first one is Wednesday at 9:00, and then four Wednesdays after that, if anybody's interested. We're paying our own way.
What is the date on the first one?
The 22nd.
August 2nd?
No, July.
July, okay. And so then I guess the Democrat Party, Boop County Democrat Party met. I guess there was 20 or 30 people at that meeting. And they voted not unanimously, but very overwhelmingly in majority to ask for your resignation. Are you, did you answer that? Are you going to resign?
No, I'm not.
Do you have a reason for that?
It was a mistake. I apologize, and I'm making better. Other people also have made mistakes, and I think that I learned from it, and I'm also learning more from it by taking these courses to make everybody more aware of what White Lives, that statement was originated from and learned from. And I know Ted, you mentioned to people, too, that without it happening, you didn't even know what it meant until this happened. So I'm finding out that more and more.
Wait a minute, how do you know what I know?
That's what somebody told me, that you told them when you went to the rally.
That's what, that's what I told somebody at the rally?
Yes. Well, I don't know, but I made, I apologize. I made my statement. I am working on educating myself and others to do better, and that's my statement.
Okay, then also I had one, also I had another comment is that at that same Democratic Party committee meeting, they called on you, Linda, to resign as mayor. Do you have some comments about that whole issue and where do you stand on it all?
I gave my statement to the social media. I don't have anything left to say. It's all been said. I think we can go on with the rest of our business meeting. And for your information, no, I am not resigning. We are taking these classes. We are going to make it very well-known in the village that we are very proactive. I'm also on the police reform committee, and we are going to make sure that we do everything we can to show the community that this is a community that everyone is safe and will want to live in. So I think this is a good thing. It happened. It brought it to a lot of our attention that we didn't know what we didn't know, and we're going to find out. And I think, I want to commend Cheryl. She has done an excellent job at trying to organize all this and dealing with the professors from Bangleton University and getting this all involved. And our department heads are all right with us. They're ready to take it, and they're all paying for it. So the village is not paying for this out of the general budget in any way, shape, or form.
It's all voluntary, Ted.
Oh, all voluntary.
I sent you an email, too.
Yeah, you've been invited.
What is, is when we said that we needed to learn more about all of this and bring it to the forefront, I think this happened for a reason because there was a lot of people out there that didn't know the origin of that. And we're going to make it known that we weren't the only ones, and we want to try to educate everybody. And I think this happening obviously has because it's been all over the news, and it has educated a lot more people that didn't know about it. And I think that was one of the main reasons why it happened. But we learned, and we hopefully will teach others about it, and that's what it's all about. You get one person that you learn, and they know about it, and then another person, and another person. It's a momentum, and then that way we can educate everybody, and then hopefully that will lead to change.
So just to make sure I heard this right, Linda, you said you were glad this happened. Was it a good thing this happened?
No, I think you're making something good of it. It's a good thing that Cheryl has called Bangleton University. I think it's a good thing that Cheryl has taken the lead on making sure that everybody knows what this has happened. I think God did it for a reason, and we didn't know that saying "White Lives Matters" was a problem. And I really did not understand that just liking something like that was so offensive. And so there's obviously a lot more I need to learn about this subject. If I don't know that, there's probably things, other things I don't know because I have lived a sheltered life, and I think it's time that we did take this class. As a matter of fact, are you taking this class? You were invited.
I've never received anything from you on that or hardly anything else.
Cheryl has sent it to you.
I sent emails to you, Ted. It's in your email.
If you can send.
We're paying the ability to mail them now.
If you can, if you can send it again, I'll take a look at it.
Okay, that's good. Now, is there anything else you'd like to report on?
Not at this moment, no.
Okay, all right. All right. Bob, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
No, everything's been covered. Planning Board did approve a special use permit for the nurseries on the Ave, the old nurseries on the Ave property. So there will be a new business going in, in that location. Otherwise, everything's.
Thank you very much. Anthony, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
No, nothing too much. Just that, doing some year-end work, some audit work right now. And we have started our street and concrete repairs for the year. So we're doing more in-house this year with our, with our street department. So you'll probably see them out doing a lot of concrete. They're down on Birdsill Street now, so they started down there. I don't know if I mentioned last time or not, we renew our insurances every year, obviously. So we just did our workers' comp insurance, and I may have mentioned this at the last meeting. But we're in a good scenario now with that. We've had some good, a couple of good years. So we have some good history there, and we're able to actually save a little over 20% on our renewal this year, which is probably the most, the biggest reduction I've seen that we've had, so.
Still with compliance?
Still with compliance. Yep, they've worked well with us. And about five years ago, we did that PPO group. So it's like a, you know, fast care for anyone who's, any employee who's injured. So that's really helped out a lot. It's cut down on wait time for anyone who is injured as far as getting in, you know, getting x-rays or MRIs or anything like that. So it's helped out a lot, and we're starting to see some of the benefits of that. So that was a good renewal we had this year with our comp. Yeah, I may have mentioned that last time, but I just wanted to make sure we brought that up again. And the last thing I just wanted to mention, too, we're about three weeks in to our concerts at the park, up on the North Side Park. They've been going good. I know we've had, our auxiliary police has been helping out with the, you know, social distancing and making sure everyone's following all the guidelines. So just wanted to report that I think that's, that's been going well. So I know they're scheduled through the month of July, and I haven't seen anything on August yet. So we'll have to see if they're going to continue the concerts in August.
I've seen the picnic tables up there. Are people utilizing them for, to go?
I have seen people there. Yeah, yeah, I know. There's picnic tables in the upper part of the, of the park. So I have, when I drive by at night, I do see, I do see people in there, yeah.
Good to hear.
Yeah, so that's about it.
Okay, thank you. All right, now it's time for our bids. I'm sorry, yes.
I had, I had one thing.
Sure.
I forgot to mention during the committee meeting that Ted briefly mentioned the meeting with San Gil on the political invite, and I attended that meeting and had my first opportunity to talk to Mr. Meyer, and it was an interesting conversation. He tried to, in my opinion, pass on a lot of fluff and deception. And he's trying to educate the public thinking that the protest group is spreading falsehoods that we're going to throw these batteries, the kiln and the afterburner, and burn the batteries up. That's what he tried to convey, which is a total lie. We know that they're going to heat the batteries up, save the metals, and then burn off the plastics. So I spelled out to him about seven items that were lies, in my opinion. And at the end, he kind of made a comment that I was some sort of a nut job, and, which I didn't take too kindly, but considering the source, it didn't bother me. But I just, I've mentioned a few people. I don't think I'll be on Christmas list this year, but it's just too bad.
All right. Well, thank you, because I didn't attend, so thank you.
You have every right to speak your mind.
Okay, definitely. All right, now we have, we're coming to bids. So may I have a motion for our first bid from Kevin?
Cheryl, our water operator? To go out to bid.
To go out to bid, thank you.
To go out to bid for the new pump station on the intersection of Hayes Avenue. Let's look at that.
We're going to have to do a, sorry, yeah.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorn?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay. Now, communications for filing.
I had something I wanted to say there before we go to communications. Item number six, item number six on the agenda for the last 30 or 40 years has been hearing of visitors. All of a sudden, it's not on this agenda, and I wondered why that is.
We had to rearrange it so that we could put our public hearing last, so that we could get all of our business done, and then we could sit back and relax and let people talk and voice their concerns. And we have no one who called in for a hearing of visitors today. We had, they had some questions for a public hearing. All the people wanted to talk on the public hearing. So now we will go on to communications for filing.
So there is a hearing of visitors at today's meeting sometime?
No, there isn't. No one, no one requested one. No one gave us their name, address, and screen name. They all want to talk on public hearing, which I'm sure they would rather do that anyway, which is fine. And when that's time, they will, absolutely everyone will have a chance. They don't have to call in first. They don't have to write in first. They can simply raise their hand when it's time, and when it's time, we will announce it. Thank you very much. And now we're on.
Well, the public was, the public was never given these new set of rules that you and I both agreed to. They're not on the website, and they don't know what the rules are. But one thing I would like to do, I would like to win the Zoom meeting and allow the public to have a hearing of visitors and speak just like they have for the last 30 years. So I would look for a second on that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, you can take a roll call vote, Mr. Bates.
Okay. Trustee Connectney? Trustee Warner? Trustee Chapman? Trustee Warner?
Yes.
And Nurjitham?
All right, now we move on to our communications for filing.
I just want to clarify, if people are confused a little bit about this, we are still having public hearings tonight on three different local laws. Those are coming up in just a few minutes. This was a separate question about the hearing of visitors, but don't think that we're not having public hearings tonight. We do have those on.
Now, I received probably 10 or 15 emails with questions that people had called in on Friday, and Linda was answering them on the phone, which those questions were meant for tonight. So why aren't those questions, and apparently also there's two letters I know of that came to the village that are supposed to be read tonight? Why aren't those being read during a hearing of visitors? And why aren't those questions from Friday being?
Ted, you're out of order, please. We're going to go on with communications for filing.
I'd like to get an answer to the question.
I don't answer any questions at the, at the board meeting. Thank you very much. We're on to communications.
Excuse me, how do you, how do you get the authority to take hearing of visitors off the agenda? If you have the authority to take it off, I have the authority to put it back on.
I didn't take it off. Nobody answered to any questions, so we are going to.
They're all wanting to talk about.
I had 15, I had 15 emails on Friday, people answering, asking questions, and you answering them.
But you know something?
Where are those questions?
Hearing of visitors is not for questions. They're for comments. People want it, I answered them. I sent it to you to tell you what I answered, so you could also answer them.
Hearing of visitors.
You're out of order.
Hearing of visitors is for anybody to talk on any topic. They're not limited to public hearing. The public hearing limits you to one topic, but hearing of visitors, they can talk on any topic they want to. So you can't limit them. You can't take it off the agenda.
That's what we passed last meeting. You are out of order. We need to go on to our communications for filing.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second.
Pat has the floor.
I would just like you, I would just like you to know, there is no out of order because we do not go by Robert's Rules of Order, and you know that. So there is no such thing as out of order.
The state does, and we do have, please, it's Pat's turn. Pat has the floor.
I just, I'm looking for some clarification.
Sure.
I saw a lot of these questions that were submitted. Maybe the people were confused about the, having to submit questions, you know, by the Friday deadline or whatever it was. Now, can a hearing of visitors, can these people ask questions about the, about the Sun Gil situation? Or are they shut off from communicating and asking those questions? Can they do, you know, can they do both or do one or the other?
We're having a public hearing tonight on the repeal of the law for the recycling facilities. At that time, we're going to open it up to the public to allow the public to speak about that topic. So that's, when we get to that, and hopefully we'll get to that soon, we get to that, that's when the public will have an opportunity to speak.
But if they submitted questions on Friday to talk during hearing of visitors, they can't talk for the hearing of visitors about the Sun Gil situation or?
The mayor just said that nobody signed up for visitors. So the hearing of visitors is different than a public hearing. I know it gets confused.
It does, it is confusing.
The rules we adopted for the hearing of visitors is that you have to sign up on the Friday before in order to have a chance to speak at the meeting. That rule does not apply to public hearings. At public hearings, all you have to do is show up to the meeting, and you can, you have a right to speak.
Okay.
So those are two different things. I think we're getting confused on that.
Rob Tiberi called in Friday with a question, and I saw those emails on Friday, and many of them said, "These questions are what I want to talk about on Monday night at the hearing of visitors." Now, they can talk about them at hearing of visitors, and they can also talk about them at the public hearing. There's two chances for them to talk about the same topic. They're not limited. If they're, if they're going to talk at the public hearing on some law, they're not limited. They can also talk about, at the hearing of visitors, because hearing of visitors is for them to talk about any topic they want to. They're not limited.
All right, thank you for your opinion. Now let's go on to communications for filing.
So you're not going to let them talk?
No. We're going on to communications for filing. Thank you very much, trustee Warner.
You're very welcome, trustee, trustee, or mayor, whatever.
I'm going to make a motion for communications for filing, and I also want to put a letter from John Bertoni that to be put into the minutes, please.
Had a very, very nice letter. He had some great ideas.
I'll second that, Cheryl.
That letter was from who?
John Bertoni.
You got a copy of it in your packet.
From Mayor Bertoni? He asked in that letter that that letter be read at the meeting tonight. For the minutes. He wanted, he wanted that letter read into the minutes on tonight's meeting.
It's being entered into it. Thank you so much.
You're refusing to read that letter?
We've had a motion to accept it, and now we're going to do the roll call because.
Trustee Connectney? Trustee Dorn?
I want to have it transcribed into the minutes, Ted.
It needs to be read, it needs to be read at the meeting when people can hear what he says.
We're voting now. Thank you, Ted.
You're refusing to let it, let it be read into the minutes?
You decipher a lot of this and read it? Do you have it?
What was that?
Not arguing with that.
Do you have the letter, Ted?
I didn't hear what you said. I didn't hear what you said.
Do you have the letter?
The letter was meant, and it was said specifically to be read at tonight's meeting for the minutes. There's nothing about transcribing it. There's nothing about voting on it. It was supposed to be read at tonight's meeting.
Go ahead and read it, Ted.
All right, go ahead and read. What do you want to do? What should we do about?
Well, there's a motion on the table, and it's been seconded.
Yes, we have to take a vote. We've had a motion. So you're out of order again, Ted. Please, please continue, Mr. Bates.
Trustee Dorn?
I got a question first about the, the update on conducting the meetings. Can somebody explain to me? Can somebody explain to me, uh, what the real truth is on the, having meetings in public or not? I'm a little confused by some of the verbiage here, uh, NICO, whether we can have meetings with people here or not, or is the order, executive order still in place?
Yep.
I'm having a little trouble understanding or reading on this.
Right, the executive order is still in place. It was in place until August fifth, unless it's extended. He's been extending it right along, uh, about four times now it's been extended. Um, but as always, we have the option. Either meet like we're doing now, which is remotely, um, or we can meet in person. But in order to do the in-person meetings, we need to follow the guidelines, which require social distancing, limitations on occupancy, and masks and so forth. So it makes meetings of large groups of people very difficult.
Okay. So meetings in this room would be a very small meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we wanted to give everybody a chance to speak at the public hearing tonight, so we wanted to give the mass, it was just easier to give more people a chance to speak if we were on Zoom.
I understand your confusion with NICO.
Yeah. It is, it's very confusing.
It's very confusing.
And then I don't think it's fair to limit people.
Yeah, we don't want to limit the amount of people.
That's not fair.
I shouldn't say this, but I think it was written by an attorney. Sorry about that.
But I don't, I don't think it's fair to limit the people.
No. I agree.
I think on them, they can speak more. Right.
So it's your turn to vote there, Pat?
Uh...
I'm sorry, trustee Dorner?
What was the motion?
We're, we're accepting communications for filing, and Cheryl, you're, I'm sorry.
Trustee Chapman? Trustee Warner?
Uh, we're commi- we're accepting communications for filing?
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, so I accept them with one, uh, with one consideration, that that letter should be read as he was asked, as he asked to.
Go ahead, Ted, read it.
You want me to read it?
No.
Ted wants to read it. No, Ted...
Ted can read the letter if he would like to. That's, that's perfectly his choice. He can read it. That's, that's no problem.
Uh, he, he asked Anthony Bates to read it. Are you gonna, are you saying that we will read it at the meeting right now?
You can read it, Ted. Uh, if you could read his writing, um, we understood most of it, and it's very, very good. He had a lot of nice ideas, uh, and it was just suggestions. If you would like to read it, you go ahead. If not, we're going on to communications for action. Thank you very much.
I don't think it's my position to read letters. I think this is, he, he made it specific what he wanted.
You, nobody's, no, it doesn't say that. It doesn't say anywhere who has to read it, and we would love to have you read it. You're a trustee?
I already talked with, with, um, Mayor Bertoni.
Yeah, Cheryl already talked.
I'll read it, I'll read it if you want me to. It's four pages. I'll read it if everybody wants me to.
It's up to you. It's whatever you want to do, you do what you want to do.
If it makes you feel better...
Right. If it makes you feel better, go right ahead and read it.
Well, since he asked that we read it, I will, I will read it. Please read this as, he says, please read this, this is Mayor Bertoni, the past mayor just before Linda came in. He was mayor for twelve years. "Please read this as part of the official minutes at the scheduled meeting on July twenty. I write to raise some questions about the change of requirement of membership of the Endicott Planning Board. Endicott was left out of the wording also, and on the appeals board. I would like to inform you that when I was mayor, uh, a person, Richard Greco, did ask to be appointed to the planning board, and of course, uh, I did not, not being a resident, I had to deny his request, despite him being a very intelligent individual, uh, would have made a wonderful member, as I knew he would, when I appointed him on the Water Commission. And he served on there longer than I am sure, and he still does. It is allowable on the Water Commission, it's the Water District, includes the village and the town, uh, it's not allowed on the planning board decisions. To me, and I hope you all should be residents in the village, that, that pay village taxes on property, not wa- not the water, but I would, I would, um, be in favor if they lived in the part-time or part-town section of the town, own property in the village. But that would be a cause that, uh, should be considered. Also, if not, an owner of property allowing a non-resident to be a, uh, not, non-voting member is a possibility. You all should make, ask the manager, the mayor, if she at all sought to find any of the eight thousand adults in the village of Endicott to serve on this board, appointing Mr. Greco at the organizational meeting in January one, or just went off a list and did not know the existing law, but went ahead anyway, as she also did with the safety committee list. I, I wonder if she asked existing trustees or new members if they had any suggestions for any new members on the planning or zoning board before she left on vacation in February? The, uh...
It says, "Prior to January first, 2020, meeting."
Right, before she left on vacation. The ability to decide, decisions must not be, uh, political, what, what village needs to have seen in the past hearings. This could have been a citizen ten-plus miles away from, and nothing, and not know anything about the heart and soul of Endicott is at stake, and it should be left to the residents of the village. Do not get me wrong, Mr. Greco is a good man, good as can, we can get, but not, but what happens when his term is o- over? What happens then? Which is the big, serious concern. We've never discussed this, and I know we're gonna vote on it later tonight. So, uh, this is something, this, this is something that should be discussed before we vote on it. And this letter does make some good points. There may, there...
It does, I agree.
Excuse me?
We agree. We've said that in the beginning. We, we thought it was a very good letter. That's why we wanted to mention. I'm sorry, continue reading.
Oh, I, I thought you couldn't, I thought you weren't able to read it, but okay, but, uh, "There may not be a better person, uh, both qualified and needed, than Mr. Greco, who I have known for fifty years. But let's look at options if you so desire to pass this law." A town council member, uh, on the town of Union, two of them live in the village. A Broom County legislator, there's also two of them that live in the village. A town resident, that is Mr. Greco, but not a voting member, he could be a contributing or an advisor to those boards. Uh, he must, must have lived in the village for at least five years to never feel, to have a feel for both the past, present, and future of the village. That's an important reason for these board members to be residents. Uh, has a business in the village, they, they should have a business in the village for at least two years, and maintains that business as a board member. The ma- uh, maybe a government teacher, or even a student, to sit in and, uh, give advice at the meetings. Um, that's the third page, we've got one more page. This seems like a case of, a, a, a cover-up of a mistake that was made by the mayor initially to appoint someone illegally on January one. Was there a request to find a resident in the paper? Sir? Excuse me?
You're ad-libbing. It doesn't say anything about the mistake by the mayor. That word "mayor" isn't there. Continue, sorry, continue.
Was made initially, okay, this, this seems like a cover-up of a mistake that was made initially to appoint someone illegally on January one. There's only one person that appoints people on January one, that's the mayor. Was there a request to find a resident in the paper? Certainly, the incentive, certainly the, uh, something, foes would like to sit on this board, and I would think maybe even as the next mayor, myself, or Mr. Clala, or Mr. Dave Archer, or, or Mayor Bertoni himself, might, or former trustees, which there are many, uh, might want to sit on the board. I would stop, I will stop now with my, with my most utmost respect to all the, that serve on the boards, but let us do this right now, backtrack on a mistake of just going off on an old list and learning out the possibility of taxpayers serving on the Endicott boards headed, headed lawfully without changing laws to make up for this mistake. Thank you for, and good luck, and again, remind you that Mr. Greco is a good man, and, but it is after this, after him I worry about, whatever the choice is. Not sure if Mayor Jackson would be, will do, what's that word, Linda?
Let me see, will do...
Be resigned.
Will be resigning.
Will be resigning, also to put up, put a kink in the law.
Not sure if Mayor, Mayor Jackson will be resigning, not sure if Mayor Jackson will be resigning, also to put a kink in the law. Sincerely, Mayor Bertoni, mayor from two thousand eight to two thousand twenty.
Very good. Now we will go on with our communication and action. So, do you like, why don't we give Eileen a chance? She was trying to talk before, so we're gonna let Eileen do the, it's your turn.
I make a motion for communication, actions for not, NYSDC, speeding, permission, authorization to...
Anthony.
And that's for American Horizon. And that's property.
So I asked, uh, our wastewater supervisor, uh, before the meeting, he just wrote back, um, that he believes it's a reference to the stormwater permit that was issued for construction. Now that construction is complete, and the permit is to be terminated.
Okay.
So that was his take on it?
It was in the back.
Yep.
That was his take on it, yeah.
Grabbing the mayor into the stormwater runoff. Hmm.
Okay, so I make a motion for this notice of action.
I, I don't know anything, I, I have no background. So, is he, does he want a board vote on that?
Um, they have, we have to sign off on it.
Okay.
So, yeah, we need authorization for someone to sign off on it, yeah.
Is this a, is this a good thing, Mr. DeFrancesco, or, uh, bad, or indifferent?
No, he completed, he completed the, um, the storm, the pictures. He completed the stormwater, what was asked of him, because it was, um, collecting water, so he did what they had to do to make sure...
Okay. Good.
About the runoff. Those are projects...
Can anybody come second that?
I'll second.
All along.
Okay.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman? Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now the second one. Whatever.
Here's a grant, transmit a letter.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, this is to, um, submit a grant, or, or to accept a grant under the CARES Act relating to the Tri-Cities Airport, right?
Right.
So, yeah, so it would be a motion to authorize the mayor and the village attorney to, um, uh, to accept the CARES Act grant for the Tri-Cities Airport.
I make a motion to accept the, just a question here on, to be on it, it says no later than June fourteen, so are we okay?
Yeah, we got an extension.
Okay. Okay, I'll second that.
Uh, Trustee Connectney? Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes, uh, yes.
Okay. Now, uh, Deputy Mayor, would you like to explain about the football? Because I think we had, do we have a question on that, or are we, we okay on that?
I contacted Gerard.
Okay.
We just said that, uh, because of, that really is airport land, we really need to get, um, Gerard's input, but I talked to Gerard, uh, about this already, so now he's aware.
Oh, okay.
And that he just asked that, um, they, um, re, uh, abide by parking rules and regulations, not parking on where it says no parking on that one side, and not blocking the gates. So we just gotta make, um, uh, Mr. Hoffman, um, aware of that, I'm sure he is, to make sure that the parents that go down there are also aware of that.
If it even happens.
Yeah, I, I guess too, you had some questions regarding the guidelines, are they gonna follow guidelines that were...
Yeah, they'll have to follow. I mean, that should be part of our motion, right, the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
...to abide by, stick to, uh, COVID guidelines.
Yeah, okay. I'll second that. Here you go, Chuck.
Um, Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yeah.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Now, for the, uh, Endicott Municipal Light, um, would you like to make the motion to table it, please?
I'm making a motion to table this right now. We need to do a little bit more research.
I'll second that.
Motion to table this item, um...
Until we do more research.
Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes, uh, yes.
Now, this is the secret review for the airport. I don't...
So this is, uh, in relation to the resolution twenty dash twenty-four, the Aviation Capital Project. So that's an obstruction study, that capital project, and this is the secret form, uh, that goes with it.
So th- this identifies it as a type-two action under secret.
Yep. We had to do this before we did the other obstruction.
Hmm, gotcha.
I make a motion to accept the secret type-two action for the airport. Second.
Trustee Connectney? Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman? Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay. Now we come for the regulations for public ac- access to records. We didn't have a, uh, a list of rules for how to go ahead and have them be foiled, so our attorney has made us up a, uh, regulations, so we would like to put those in, uh, pass those for action.
Motion to accept regulations for public access of records. We know, probably know that it's foiled.
Trustee Connectney? Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Uh, Bob, I had a question for Bob. Does that need to be a law, or is it just a, uh, regulation that we adopt?
It does not need to be a law. It can be a law, but it doesn't need to be, um, it's fine to do it just as a regulation, which is the way we've set it up.
Okay.
And, Trustee, what's your vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just still, but, uh, the audit letter.
Oh, I can't see it on mine, I'm sorry.
I know this update came in late this afternoon.
Yeah, I was hoping to get this Friday. This is just our annual audit we have done by a third party, um, CPA firm.
Mm-hmm.
So we just have the, uh, authorization approved by the board.
I make a motion to, um, do the annual audit.
I'll second that.
Okay, Trustee Connectney?
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Dorner?
Trusty Dornor?
Yes.
Trusty Chapman?
Yes.
Trusty Warner?
I would like to make a motion to change the bill. I'll second.
Are these both sets or the July sixth?
July sixth.
Yeah, July sixth and July twentieth.
Okay, July sixth and July twentieth.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
My agenda has no money on July twenty. There's no dollar figures there.
I haven't.
There's an up, updated one.
Yeah, my.
It was emailed, the update.
My folders are having.
Yeah, the last one was, uh, emailed late this afternoon. That's true. I didn't have it. I have the other one.
Well, I think, uh, I think we should maybe vote next time if, I mean, how many different agendas are we getting at the la, on the last day like today? There, I know of at least two that we got today.
Well, it's, it's been a lot, Ted, you're right. It's been, it's been hectic to get everything in.
All right, so we'll just, we'll just do the first one?
Maybe we should, maybe we should set it where the agenda doesn't change after Friday afternoon or some kind of time on Friday.
Yeah, probably be a good idea. We, we were trying to do that.
So we'll just do this seven, six, twenty.
Okay, that sounds good, good.
Uh, Trusty Connectney?
Yes.
Trusty Dornor?
Yes.
Trusty Chapman?
Yes.
And Trusty Warner?
Uh, this is just for July sixth?
Just the sixth, yep.
Yeah, just for the sixth.
Uh, yes.
All righty, now do we have any unfinished business?
Uh, I do. I have a couple of things. Actually, I have, uh, four things. Um, I had emailed you, Linda, for, uh, three times so far in the last two months about the weeds that are growing through two and three feet tall in the parking lots behind the avenue. And the village does own the parking lot in Union on the, on Exchange Avenue where the Dollar Store is. We all, we are the owner of that parking lot and also the one at Corbin's and behind, uh, Lampy's. And Linda, you and I both ran for election last year complaining about these weeds that grew up all last year. And we told people we were going to do something about these things. And, and I emailed you three times so far, but this, we still have the, how does this look to our, not only our residents who goes shopping to these stores and park there, but what about people from out of town that see that? We look like a dried up old town from out west.
We would, except that what you don't understand, Ted, is during COVID, we let go six of our garbage people from, from, uh, what, what do they call, People Ready? And we had even our water department on, on the back of garbage trucks. We, we let a lot go in the village and it's taking us a long time to get caught back up. Now, Kurt, I'm sorry, Brett has got a new, um, way of getting rid of the weeds. He's mixing vinegar and salt and dishwasher liquid. And he's going, starting on the avenue. He's even hired some part-time kids to help with this and he's doing one lot at a time. He just hasn't gotten to that lot yet. But if you think it's.
I'm talking, no, I'm talking about all, I'm talking about.
We're always welcome to call the code.
I'm talking about all the lots. Has he started on any lots yet?
Yes, he has. He, that's what he told me and I will ask him in the morning. Uh, but if you have a code issue, you can always call code if you feel it's a code issue.
So I should call it.
And then code will give him a work order. Yeah. And then code will give him a work order. That's how it works.
So you're saying I should call the code office to file a complaint, uh, code violation on the village itself?
Sure, I've had one called on me. Gerald's had one called on her. Village has.
No, we're talking about the village, not, not people.
No, the village gets violations all the time. Sure, we had garbage that wasn't right and somebody's relative wrote us a, a violation.
So you're saying, so let me just, let me just get this straight. You're saying the proper procedure would meet, for me to call the code office and file a complaint on weeds that the village is not cutting?
Yes, that's, that's your right. As a resident, you don't even have to be a trustee to do that.
Now, I also think if we're not cutting, if we have weeds that are twen, uh, two feet and three feet tall, how can we possibly enforce the grass law on ten inches on people mowing their lawns?
Well, that's why we need to let them know that it's that bad. And I have pastures on and I have asked you to also pass it on. So what else would you like? What else, what else is on your list, Ted?
Okay, and I appreciate you passing that on. The second thing on the list is along Clark Street and a little bit up Rebel Avenue, there's probably seventy-five to a hundred trees. Every single one of them is dead. They've been that way for probably a year, maybe two years. And I've had people going over about that. Uh, what can we do about that? That's on here on campus.
Oh, Ted, um, we've had our fire marshal right up here on. And I have told you this, we've had them right up here on and we're into violations now. And we're trying to get our court, code system so that we can get into court and start, you know, giving these people, I don't know if it's fines or if it's fees. I don't know which way they work. Uh, that's up to the court, but we're taking them to court for it because they've been wasting, they're dying too long. They, they've just been dead for too long and we don't want those ashboards to travel to good trees. So we are very aware of that problem. It's, it's much higher on our list. Um, Ted, that's what I wanted to say.
So you said we have given them a violation?
Oh, yes, and we're going to keep, yes, numerous ones. That and that building that's on the corner of Oak and Clark, that building that's falling down, that's very dangerous. We're very upset about that and our code department is working vigorously on that. But going into court is a headache. Would you mind if I let Pat talk for a second? Cause he raised his hand and he had something.
Well, I would just like to finish. I'd like to finish my, I have one more thing. Uh, underneath, underneath Nanicoke Avenue, I, I called you maybe a month ago. The parking lot behind Rogers Market, the entire parking lot, when it rains, it runs back towards Nanicoke Avenue and runs right down the hill. And every time it rains, there's a great big pile of rocks right on the sidewalk. And I know Brett took the guys out there and cleaned it one time, but, uh, it's almost got, either we gotta fix it permanently at the top somehow or we have to go out and clean those rocks off the sidewalk every time it rains. Because wheelchairs and even people just walking cannot get through there without tripping.
You're absolutely right, and that's why we've instructed our code, uh, our fire marshal to go talk to the people who own that property and see if we can't make some kind of, uh, remediation in there because that has to be fixed and you're absolutely right.
Our village engineer also.
Our village engine, yeah, they're, the village engineers over there talking to them.
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's probably, could easily be a way to solve that, but we need to have, have a camera, camera on or somebody can go look at it.
Yeah, and that's, that's what they're doing. They're over there working on it.
So, uh, so I'm done with my, you can go ahead, Pat.
Thanks, Ted. Uh, he brought up a point about a year of campus building. I keep, hate to beat a dead horse here, but, uh, those sidewalks are still not clear. They have their wooden horses there, uh, blocking the, the, uh, walkways. I don't think there should be two sets of laws, one for the, the poor or middle, uh, income people and one for the rich. If we can, uh, find the people for having, uh, high grass, something needs to be done to get those sidewalks clear, those buildings fixed.
And that's why our fire marshal is taking them to court because you're absolutely right and it's deplorable.
They do have a court date.
Yeah, they do have a court date, but it's deplorable, Pat. You're absolutely right. And I drive by it every day and it, it angers me every time I go by there to think that they're letting them go like that.
And the second point, you talked about Brett's solution to kill the weeds.
Yes.
That, uh, I've used that same solution, so it works very well.
Thank you.
A little vinegar, dishwashing liquid and, uh.
I guess some salt.
Yes.
Salt, so.
Thank you, yes. Yeah, I used it.
Ted, on that building on Oak Hill Avenue, Oak Hill and Clark Street, um, Linda's been saying they, they're taking them to court, but, um, I didn't know, I didn't really buy that. So I called, uh, Brian last week and asked him what the story was on that building. Apparently, they immediately went out and fixed three sides of the building. This is what, uh, this is what Brian told me anyway. Uh, they fixed three sides of the building immediately. I guess the side facing Oak Hill is the one that's not fixed. And apparently, they're in some kind of process of fixing that also. But he did not mention court, so I don't know if that's really true or not.
Well, he was told that they're going to court.
That's what Brian told us.
On court, I'm not exactly sure, I believe it could be the trees or the building. I don't know. He just said that that, they've got a court date here on.
Mm-hmm.
For code violation. He didn't specifically say which one.
Maybe they have more than that. Who knows so many codes? They might have a whole lot of court, uh, code violations.
They have a whole lot of code violations.
They probably do and, yeah, well, but he's trying to be on top of it, so.
They've been keeping him very busy.
Okay, does anybody else have any unfinished business to tend to? Okay, now how about new business? Does anybody have any new business they'd like to talk about? Okay, then we'll go on to our public hearings.
Before we do public hearings, I just want to make one reminder that this is the posi, this is the place on the agenda that for thirty years we've had the second hearing of visitors. Uh, it's now been taken off this agenda.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to talk about the zoning board of appeals. Uh, anyone who would like to make a comment? We're going to, uh, allow membership from one town of Union person to be on the zoning board of appeals. But remember, this has to be approved by the board as a whole. So you can't, so I couldn't just go and appoint just anybody I, I desired because I do appoint, but the board can say no. Or I don't appoint people if they're not, if they don't, uh, if they don't have the qualifications. We liked Mayor Bertoni's, uh, qualifications very well. I mean, we're thinking of writing them down and using them as a guide for when we do start picking people because it was, it was a pretty good way. We, we did like it. So we're thinking of that. But now if anybody would like to talk about this, about this, uh, having a member from the town of Union on the zoning board, and I do want to make a mention.
Sorry.
I brought this up because in January, Judge Tottolus reminded me that, that he's having trouble finding other people who would like to be judge and he'd like to retire at the end of his term, I think. And that perhaps we might have to look for the town of Union for people to be on the judgeship or the town, the zoning board of appeals or the planning board. And that's when we decided to see about making, making, uh, a town of Union person, uh, on our, one of our boards. But as you and I had talked in January, we decided only one because if we had more than that, we'd run into trouble. So you were in on this decision and I think we're doing pretty good. So if anybody would like to talk about just the zoning board of appeals first, please, please, uh, raise your hand and the administrator will, will unmute you.
Yep, so anyone who's on Zoom, uh, if you could just do the raise your hand feature, uh, I can call on you. And anyone who's on phone, just phone only, uh, we'll go through one by one, um, just to see if you want to speak on this topic only.
Anthony, one comment, I'm not sure if everybody really understands what this is. The zoning board has five members on it. They meet and make decisions on specific certain things, three or four things. This New York State law says all five members have to be residents of the village of Endicott. So what this particular law does, it says, we will, if this law passes, one of those five people is allowed to be from town of Union. In other words, outside of the village, but they do have to be in town of Union where they live. So that's what this law is for.
That, that's part of the law and the other part of the law would allow the, uh, village board to appoint two alternates to the zoning board of appeals. And those alternates could then sit, uh, in the, in, if there's a, uh, someone absent from one of the ZVA meetings, then an alternate can sit in for them. So the, the law really does two things.
And it, just because it's, we have it's been, it could be a county union board mem, uh, member, doesn't necessarily that we have to appoint somebody from the county union. It just gives us that option in case we can't find anybody from the village of Endicott.
Cause we've gone a couple of years without anybody on the planning and zoning. It's been like pulling teeth to get people to join. So that's why we chose this, but we would like to hear, anyone who would like to make.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, that, that's not true. We've had people on the planning board for the last fifteen years. The zoning board for the, let me finish. Zoning board is the one that had nobody on it for about five years. And I engineered the way to get it filled with people. And you remember this, Linda, cause I, I got you, Cindy Tottolus, John Visser and myself. And we took, we went and took a class on zoning boards. And then the board was forced, Eileen was there on the board. The board was forced to, to vote people onto that zoning board because now we had four people that wanted to be on it, which they said there was nobody, and four people who were trained. Even though none of us got voted onto that board, we did force the issue.
Yes, and it worked out very well. We, we did a very good job in that and now we've got, uh, now we've got these people. So I would like to hear if anybody else has anything they would like to add.
If nobody's gonna raise their hand, I, I got this letter from John Bertoni just before this meeting. Uh, is there any way we could table this until the next meeting? So I could have time to, uh.
You can.
I'd like to, I would like to ask some people on the planning board, on the zoning board, how they feel about this.
All right.
And I don't think I have enough time to study and make a, uh, a smart, uh, vote on this. So I'd like to, if nobody's gonna talk, I'd like to see if we can pass this on to the next meeting.
Yeah, so, Pat, do you, are you looking to table the public hearing? Or are you looking to have the public hearing and then table the vote?
Uh, I'd like to table the whole issue, to tell you the truth.
Table the public hearing? Um.
Or if they're gonna, or if they're gonna talk, if they're gonna talk.
We'd like to let people.
And let them talk and then if they're not gonna talk.
I think it's a good, I, I think Pat's got a good idea there.
Ted, one, one comment I'd make on the residency issue. Um, the reason why you expand the residency, uh, is if you're having trouble finding people who are residents to serve on a particular board. If you're not having trou, trouble finding people to be residents, then I typically advise against expanding residency. So it's really the exception. So I, I think, I think that's the threshold question is can you find people from the village of Endicott to be on these boards?
And I think that would be in our best interest to do that first.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
And I think, uh, I think that's a good.
And then the villagers also take the, the, the training classes because.
Yes, one of them I'm running to.
If you're gonna be on a board, you need to take the training classes and do your due diligence and also you need.
No, that's, that's not required until after you're already on. I think Bob made a very good point and John Bertoni made several very good points in his letter that, uh, if you have a property, if you have, own a property in Endicott, which we all do, and you have an application before the zoning board or the planning board, and there's only five people that are gonna vote on your, the fate of your application, should you, are you, how can we logically justify having someone from town of Union make that, one of the five be making that decision? So it's very, it's, it was a very good point, John made in his letter. Uh, I hadn't thought of those sides, that side of it, but I do think that it's take, we should take some time and think about these things and, uh, consider it at the next meeting, maybe.
And one of the things I also talked to John about too is maybe making that person like an advisor or, or a non-voting member.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's an important person who has some very good expertise, which, uh, there are people and, and actually Richard Greco has some excellent expertise on many issues. Uh, those boards could have, uh, an advisor sit on those boards and advise them. And they would have just as much sway on the, on the opinion and on the vote as a non-voting member. And that's another possibility as a solu, as a possibility to do this.
Right, and that's what I talked to John about.
And I think that, I think, Pat, after you put words in your mouth, I think you probably mean the same, we've got one ish, one law for the zoning board, one law for the planning board. You probably are, are talking about both of these issues, I think.
That's correct.
All right, now do you want to table them or do you want to hold them over, Pat? Which would you like?
Can you do, can you give us the, uh, the difference between tabling and holding it over?
I'll let you do that, Bob.
Well, holding over is when there's a resolution that's being presented, uh, a, a, a member can, can hold over that resolution. But I don't think there is a resolution being presented right now. I think we're, we're grappling with whether or not you want to have a public hearing on these two laws. Um, so i- if you want to table the public hearing, you can do that. Um, and we can go back to the drawing board on these laws.
I think going to your point, Bob, and I like what you said because, um, this is only kind of a last ditch effort if we can't find anybody out of the eight thousand adults in Endicott to be on one of these boards. Um, but we don't even know the answer to that because we have not even tried.
Okay, all right.
All right, good thing.
Well, if we, if we go through this public hearing and then it goes to a vote.
We don't have to vote if, if you want to go through the public hearing, we don't have to vote. It's up, but it's up to you, whichever way you want to do it.
Public hearing is gonna be a vote.[1676.12]
No, 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 we do not have to vote. No, we can have a public hearing without a vote.
But-
But it's up to you.
But if you revise these laws, then we'll go back to square one, and we'll have to hold another public hearing.
Okay, that's what I'd like to do.
Okay.
So it sounds like you want to table the public hearing.
That's correct.
Okay.
Should we do them one by one?
Same with the zoning, planning and zoning.
We'll do them one by one.
Yeah, and then I want to have a little discussion after that, but let's get through these motions.
So we got a motion from trustee Dornar, I need a second, on the, this will be to table?
The public hearing for the zoning board membership.
Okay, so I need a second on that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, so trustee Connecty?
Yes.
Trustee Dornar?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Okay. Pat, you want to do the second one, too?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to table the public hearing on the planning board membership law.
I'll second.
Trustee Connecty?
Aye.
Trustee Dornar?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Before we move on, I'm going to need some direction when we go back here, because half of this law, of the zoning board law, was to allow for alternates to be placed on the zoning board of appeals. I can easily go back and revise this just to include only the alternate process, and we can get that in front of the board, or we can just wait on the whole thing.
I think that we'll, I personally would think just to go with the alternates first, and then let's work this part out first, because I, like I said, I talked to Mayor Bertoni, and I've talked with you how I felt about those, also about changing that and making it almost like the last resort for county unions. So I would personally, this is my personal opinion, is I would rather redo the law and just allow the alternate.
Re-do the whole law, or just do the alternates now?
Well, we can ask them to do the whole law.
It just has to redo the whole law, because it's all as one. But just redo the law, just include the alternate, is what I'm saying.
I'm not sure what you're saying, but I'm-
We can't, right?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what you're saying, but I think it would be a good idea to go ahead and pass both of these laws, or rewrite them, so they only address the alternates, because we do want alternates, and the law as it stands now does not allow us to do that.
That's right.
That's what I'm saying, Ted.
Yeah, okay, I agree with you.
Okay, so I can easily go back and do that, and get that in front of you next meeting.
Yeah, so we need another public hearing on-
We're going to need to do another public hearing, and another county and planning board review, so, yeah.
Okay. All right. Now, come to our last one. This is the repealing of making recycling facilities a permitted use in industrial zones, and we would like to open this up for public comment. And I think this is what everyone has been asking for when they wrote in. We tried to answer your questions, but now is your time to make the comments. You're allowed three minutes, and please keep them just for the repealing of the recycling facility permitted use in industrial zones. Keep it to the one topic that we are discussing. So it's up to you, Mr. Administrator.
Same thing, if anyone wants to speak, that's on Zoom, just please use the raise your hand feature. We'll call on you, you all have three minutes to speak. And anyone who's on just the phone only, we'll get to you eventually after everyone has gone through the first procedure here. So I have Howard's iPad, I'll start with you. Just have to unmute yourself, and then you'll have three minutes.
Well, I won't need three minutes, but I am going to say how happy I am, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I'm happy to see that the board plans on removing the law that was supposed to be finalized today, and I support making, you know, taking away the, the rescission, okay? I think that's as clear as I can be, and I want to thank you for that effort. And I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I saw Rob To Berry. Rob, are you, hold on, I can't, I can't hear you. Are you, are you on another line, too? I see your video here, but I don't have an unmute portion on your video. Let me see if I can find you.
I see him running.
Yeah, I only see the video.
Yes, unmuting undone. Yeah, maybe it's wrong.
Yeah, I can't unmute you on the video here. Yeah, I was trying to get Rob here.
He doesn't have his mic on there, so he's unmuted.
6877, hold on. Rob, are you there?
Yep. You got me, you can be on the video and phone at the same time, so-
Yeah, so I saw you get the raised hand on your-
Yeah, thank you for doing that. Listen to what, to what Howard just said, I have to agree. I mean, there's no question, we want this repealed. Look, the zoning amendment wasn't strong enough, right? This needs to be completely repealed so that the proper protections can be put in place. Let's do this right. We don't want recycling facilities that are going to cause harm, you know, to this environment and to the health of the people that live here. You know, there's a lot of people, besides myself, that grew up here, and, you know, to the mayor, you know, the initial petition that was put out there for 4,300 people, I know you had made a comment and thought that a lot of these people don't live here. I would say 99% of the people that signed it, in all honesty, live here. And the ones that didn't, the ones that don't live here, they used to live here. So this is really, really important to thousands of people. And we all know, Mayor, you know, the trustees know, Bob knows, that the zoning amendment was procedurally flawed. Let's start over here, let's pull this back, let's repeal it, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Next, I have Claudia Bramer.
Thanks, Anthony.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Okay, you're on.
Yep.
Good.
So I'm Claudia Bramer, I am representing many of the residents in the village of Endicott, and we do want to thank you for agreeing to rescind the recycling facilities amendment that was passed. We were really happy to hear you talk about that at the last meeting, and that you're moving forward with that tonight to take action to rescind the law. I won't go over all of the details of my May 13 letter to you, but I just want to touch on some of the points where I was outlining the numerous procedural errors with the passage of that zoning amendment. The 239 package to the county was incomplete, there was a failure to notify the town of Vestal. The planning board gave no report on its opinion of the zoning amendment, and as a side note, in my mind, they did not have enough information, and they really didn't want to have the village pass it in the form that it was, but basically, they gave no report. There was also a failure to meet the criteria for properly amending the code, and there was a failure to comply with the seeker considerations. I have to say that I do this kind of work a lot, municipal zoning and environmental law, and this has been a really confusing and misleading process, Mayor. And we thank you, and we look forward to you voting on this rescission tonight. On behalf of the many dozens of residents who have been working hard on this issue for the many, for the last several weeks, please listen to your residents and your constituents. Give them the voice that they deserve and that you were elected to represent. You need to hit reset and rescind the zoning amendment tonight, and then take those two laws down to Albany at the same time, the zoning amendment that you previously passed and the repeal that you are going to pass tonight. Otherwise, the people of the village will have no choice but to sue its own government to rescind the zoning amendment, which is going to be costly for both the village and the residents, and we urge you to not force us into that corner. Please repeal the zoning amendment at tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Diane Hunter.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Good. Yep, you're on.
Okay, my name is Diane Hunter, and I reside at 519 and 1/2 East Main Street. I, yes, I'm at your repealing amendments and laws that you put into place illegally. I unfortunately feel like it's kind of a little bit of a smokescreen. It's like, okay, this is what we're going to do right now to pacify people, and then behind the scenes, we're going to work to make this happen. I think you guys are playing with fire, that you've been playing with fire, and honestly, at this point, I don't trust hardly any of you, other than Pat and Ted. This project should have never come on board, and everybody that had something to do with the project coming on board is responsible for where we are today. But I think this company is very much of the impression that they can work with everybody on this board minus Pat and Ted, and that this is just kind of like, okay, this is what we're going to do right now. But let me make it very clear to you, that I, as a resident, my family, and everybody else that's on this call that's against this, will not let this go forward as a project here in Endicott, and we will fight you, whatever that takes, to make sure that that doesn't happen here in Endicott. You need to bring other industries in here, other than industries that are going to spew toxins into our air. So if you think that doing things behind the scenes is going to work, because then we're going to change our minds somehow, we are not going to change our minds, and that's what I have to say tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Lisa Lee next. You just have to unmute, you have to unmute yourself first, before you start.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yep, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Well, I am also in line with everyone else that's spoken so far, and I want to thank you for making this decision to rescind the law, and I'd ask that you please vote tonight to repeal the zoning amendment and take it off the books without delay. I've written to the mayor in emails, I've spoken to her, and I've also attended these meetings in the past and spoken, you know, I am, my family and I are against this company coming to Endicott to operate with an incinerator. I think there are many other options for our community, and that we should use the resources of our community, the talents, the skills, the knowledge, and the abilities of our residents that we can see already employed with the No Burn Broom Group and others. Let's use the skills and talents of the residents to come to bear, to bring in greener, safer industry and jobs to our community, so that, you know, our families and our children, our visitors, our business people can employ a better community now and in the future. I don't think we want to be known for pollution. I don't think we want that on our, as our legacy. So I think we can make some better and more intelligent decisions, and use, again, like I said, the resources of everyone to come to bear, to bring in better industry, to bring in better jobs, to bring in safer things to our community. And I don't, I'm against the pollution, so let's please rescind this law and take another look, and make a better, more informed decision on who we invite to be part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ellen To Berry next.
I'm Ellen To Berry, and I grew up on Irving Avenue on the north side. I currently live in Massachusetts, so I'm one of the people that, you know, of the 4,000 some odd people who signed a petition that, you know, I live out of town, but, and actually, some of the people that signed have owned property here, even if they live in Australia. Just because I don't live here anymore doesn't mean I don't care about this community, my entire family lives here. I currently live in, outside of Boston, and I drove home thinking that the meeting was going to be in person, oops, so it wasn't, but I'm really glad that I'm here. I truly care about this village, and I really appreciate you rescinding this law tonight. It's not the right thing to do, the way it's written. I think that there's just some things that can need to be changed, and it would be a wonderful law, and bring in recycling, or other ways of recycling lithium ion batteries that do not include incineration, and they should be explored. And it would be wonderful to have a team of people that are the people from the village board, the people that are from San Gil, and some experts in the community, such as the experts that we have on No Burn Broom. It's just, you know, we're a group of residents who really care about the community, and I hope that you will do the right thing. All the things that Claudia mentioned are very, very important points. Please do the right thing, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Amanda next. Amanda and Amber.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, you're on.
Okay. I agree with everyone else who's spoken tonight, saying that they want to rescind the law tonight. I am here speaking as a mom, as a mom to my three children, whose backyard is 100 feet away from this facility. I'm here to speak as a mom to my Daisy Girl Scouts, who I lead. I am here to speak as a mom to all of the children in Endicott, and I think that if my seven-year-old can articulate the message about why we don't want this here, then the grownups who are representing her should also be able to articulate why we don't want it here. The residents do not want it here. We have to think about the children and their future. We have to create a town that they want to stay in, that they're going to thrive in, and they're going to be healthy. We need to create an environment that isn't toxic to them, that isn't dangerous to them, that isn't an explosion risk, or a fire risk, or a health risk. We need to be thinking about the kids and the children, who are going to be playing in the grass, and putting their hands in their mouth, and touching the playgrounds, and swimming in the swimming pools, and, and living here for however long. We want those children to stay in this community, we don't want them to grow up and leave. So I am asking you to do the right thing and rescind the law tonight, and to continue to push San Gil out of our community, because we don't want them here, and the children don't want them here, and I'm speaking for them. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have George next. Unmute first there.
Thank you, Anthony. Hi, my name is George. Right now, I'm living in Endicott, New York, on McKinley Avenue. I am part of No Burn Broom. I'm glad that this law and the zoning issue, all of it, is being adjusted tonight. I am all for it. There are some things that I'd like to say, just in reference to the process and the information that has been sent to our mayor, deputy mayor, and the trustees, either from the committee and also from all the experts. Literally, hundreds and hundreds of pages of science, pure science, discovered from books, discovered on the internet, has proven as a counterpoint to everything that has been shared with us, from San Gil, Dana Schmier, and from the village. They have been countered many times by many people. I see all the familiar faces that are on the committee. There has been a deaf ear from the village, not listening to the people at all, as if we are speaking, muffled, and they don't understand us. All the science that has been offered from the village, either spoken, or on the radio, on the press, that has been babbled and repeated, and repeated, and repeated, even from Dana Schmier and his specialists at the table, have been proven incorrect. They are not clear, they are not telling the truth. None of us on, in the village here, are ignorant, we are not stupid, we are not depressed in our brains and our thought process. We already know, but the IBM spill already did, and has done, and continues to do, because it's still present here. We don't need an incinerator. The proof of real estate stated by the village of Endicott, okay, and stated by Dana Schmier, oh, yes, property values will go up. You Google that, just Google that. Your property values will drop from 10% to 25.9% within a diameter of three to five miles of the incinerator placement. You will not get back what you put into your home, should you sell it. There will be no profit sales for decades with this incinerator present, and with the discovery, God forbid, in our water, our land, and soil of PFOs, PFOAs, fluoridated benzene, hydrofluoric acid, right by the Susquehanna River, for goodness sakes. That's why this area is so oppressed and depressed. It's not going to grow, it's not going to be a place to move to, unless we go to a clean industry. We are not against recycling, we are not against that, we are not against reclaiming what- We are not against reclaiming what we use. We are all for it. It's got to be green. There are processes that are indeed green. That is also discoverable. Please, don't listen to me, don't believe what I say. Do your research. Put words into Google in the search bar. You will find all records and proof of what I'm sharing with you today. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, George. Rocky, were you trying to raise your hand there? Did you want to speak? If you can, I'm, I'm unmuting now if you want to.
Well, okay. Thank you, Anthony. I want to applaud the board for rescinding that law. I know it was done illegally, but I also want to mention, I've lived my whole life listening to my gut, and my gut tells me there's something else. There's something that they're not telling me, and I've never felt so distrusting about, um, a municipality in my life. I'm the owner and builder of Skyview Heights that sits on 13 acres. It's 99% occupied. I have one vacancy. I own a site twice the size contiguous with it, which I was going to develop, is more senior housing. And, uh, over 20 years of my tax pilot, I'm going to pay $5.8 million in tax. Well, I would say if I developed the upper side, I'll probably pay an additional, if you double it, close to 12 million more in taxes for a total of about 18, 18 million dollars in 20 years. If they have any ideas of approving San Gil or accepting them as, under the manufacturing law, as a recycler, Linda has herself has told me repeatedly that there is no incinerator. That's delusional thinking. Denial is not a river in Egypt. It is a kiln, but if you look up the definition of that type of kiln within the first three words, it, it says incinerator. So I do believe that there is other avenues to proceed to bring revenues into the village without polluting it, and that Mr. Meyer from San Gil so eloquently spoke and poo-pooed everything, saying everybody's questions were unwarranted, that it's totally safe, even though the DEC doesn't know how to measure PFAS articles, but they would help out the DEC. The DEC didn't do too well with IBM and the mess that they left behind. So that's all I wanted to say. There are other avenues to proceed rather than two smokestacks in the center of that village. It shouldn't happen in Endicott. It shouldn't happen anywhere. Thanks so much for your time.
Thanks, Rocky. Okay, I have Mary Ann next.
Okay, hi. Um, I'm urging and encouraging the five board members to, um, keep their word. At your, your last vote, you all unanimously voted to rescind this law, and so I'm just asking you to keep your word tonight. At the last, um, public hearing, my speech was about truth. It's like my foremost, um, belief in my life, to tell the truth. Um, so I want to say something. The last, um, board meeting whereby we got to ask questions of the mayor, um, Mayor Jackson, she pulled my question, and I asked her to address something that was a, um, email sent by Governor Cuomo on Earth Day. And I'm going to minimize my screen right now so I could read it verbatim. It says, "Today is the 50th Earth Day." It was April 22nd. It says, "Today is the 50th Earth Day. Protecting our planet and environment isn't just a lofty goal, it's a public health necessity. We have found that neighborhoods with high concentrations of COVID cases are also locations with polluting plants. The quality of the air we breathe and the water we drink impacts all of our health." So I had asked Mayor Jackson to explain that, and Mayor Jackson basically sloughed it off and said, um, "No, COVID, COVID in, in this San Gil, no, they, they don't have anything to do with each other." Next question? So I have actually written to Governor Cuomo five times, and this was the last, uh, thing that I wrote to him. I said, um, "I want to share your Earth Day email." So he sends out an Earth Day email to businesses, which I got, okay? And I said, "I have asked myself what your motivation would be to write about COVID and polluting plants? Were you hoping people should move away if they live near them? Were you hoping people would rise up and argue to their government to not allow polluting plants to come into their neighborhood? Were you hoping polluting plants would do the right thing and up and leave?" Very interesting email, telling people who have, who have a home that it's, that COVID cases are higher concentrations near polluting plants. And so we all on the north side and on the south side and on the east side and the west side of Endicott would live near a polluting plant. And here we have our governor telling us COVID cases are higher. The other thing I want to say, I am not going to, um, name names because I'm just not going to do that, and the person will know who, who they are. But I spoke to one member of this board, and I spoke to that person at length for I, an hour and a half, the night before the vote, the night before you voted to do the rezoning. So it had to be March, or excuse me, May 6th. And I asked that person if they knew how many batteries San Gil would process. A person said to me these exact words, "Mary Ann, they're going to start with a restricted amount, and then they're going to ramp up afterwards." And I said, "No." Could you please explain how many batteries San Gil plans on processing? And the person said, "I don't know," in a very snarky way. "Do you know?" And I said, "Yes, I do, because I have got the, um, civil engineering Plumlee report right in front of me. My husband, Pat Dorner, is a trustee." So...
Mary Ann, I have your three minutes.
Oh, I need, just one more thing, Anthony. Sorry. I just have to. And I asked this person if they knew how many batteries, and they didn't know. And then I said, "2,000 pounds." And I said, "Do you think that's a day, a week, a month?" And the person, again, snarkily said to me, "I don't know." And then I said, "They plan on processing 2,000 pounds of batteries per hour."
Sorry, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have Paul next.
Hi.
Three minutes.
Hi there, can you hear me? Yeah.
Yep. Yep, you're good.
Thank you for letting me talk tonight. I agree with the others. This law should be rescinded, and I applaud your courage to do that, having, it takes a lot of courage to change your mind in public, and I'm glad that you, you've done so. The original law as proposed included the vague word "processes." I, today, John Raspatani and I from the No Burn Broom Science Team sent a long letter to Governor Cuomo, pointing out that there are five different processes for handling lithium-ion batteries. Uh, some are bad and some are good. Uh, the bad one is when you use high temperature and burning. Let me explain, the central problem, if you want to recover the valuable metals in these batteries, in the electrodes, specifically in the cathodes, you have to separate these metals that you want from a polymer, a binder called polyvanilidine difluoride. Don't worry about the chemistry, but that separation is absolutely critical. You can do it with aqueous solutions. You can do it with solvents. You can do it with, with, um, vacuum distillation. There are several different methods, but one method is to heat the material. So you melt this polymer, you then evaporate this polymer, which produces gases, many of them very toxic, and these, these gases are then burnt in an afterburner. Now, you can call it what you long, but that is incineration, and that's not something that most residents in Endicott want to have happen here. So if you rescind this law, and I hope you will vote on it tonight, it will allow you to be very precise. You can define what processes you will accept and what you won't accept. Zoning for a village or a municipality is a very precious power of that village, and you don't throw it away lightly. You want to control what operations can go on in that industrial area so that it not only protects the residents, but it protects existing businesses and businesses like development that Rocky has talked about. That's under your control. Don't give it up with some vague word like "processing." And I urge you all to read the letter that Don Raspatani and I sent to Governor Cuomo today, explaining what we have found out about the chemical emissions when you burn this polyvanilidine difluoride. You do have the potential of reforming these polyper or polyfluorinated alkyl substances, otherwise known as PFAS, the forever chemicals, the dioxins of the 21st century. Yes, these substances like PVDF are very stable, like Teflon, very stable when you're using them in frying pans and things like that. But when you heat them and when you burn them, they break down to produce very, very toxic byproducts. We've explained all that to Governor Cuomo today. We've copied the head of the DEC, the DOH, and, and the, and the village board, and many, many others, so that you can, hopefully, he can appreciate, uh, the dangers involved here, and certainly dangers that cannot be countenanced in a village like Endicott that is struggling, struggling to recover from the poison that they've been exposed to in the past. And my wife and I have been so impressed as we walk around the streets of Endicott and see how people are, are doing their utmost to increase the value of their property, to look after their lifelong investments, and it just must not be thrown away. That's what zoning is all about. Please be careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I have Jenny B. is next.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yep. Yep, you're on.
Okay, uh, first, I'd like to start by saying thank you. Um, it does take a lot of courage to rescind something that you know is wrong, but I'd also like to say thank you to Amanda for speaking up for our children and their health and well-being. And I guess the problem I have still is I don't feel like this is a done, done deal. I feel like we're getting fleeced, and yes, you're going to rescind it, but, you know, something's in the back burner. And unfortunately, the part, majority of the reason why I have this feeling is because we have been lied to several times by our elected officials. And I feel like you, if you're an elected official, it's a very serious job, and you should take into consideration what your constituents want. We vote for you to speak and vote on our behalf, and I'm very disappointed in our Endicott government as a whole right now, our village of Endicott government as a whole, except for two exceptional people, Pat and Ted. And I thank them in, for us, speaking for us and not giving up, um, the rest. Uh, it's, it's, I'm utterly disappointed that you would put your constituents at such a risk and that you would continually lie to them and just give us half-truths. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So that's all the, um, hands I see up at this point. I'm going to go through a couple of phone calls. You got one?
There's, uh, Owen. Owen's...
Oh, she doesn't have her. Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Okay. Yep.
Okay. Um, I just want to say that I agree with quite a few people here. I don't know if it takes courage for these people to rescind what was already a bad decision and was not backed by anybody in the community. In fact, half the people didn't know about it. But I guess if that's what we're going to do, we're going to say, "Good job." Okay. Um, I've lived all over the country. I grew up in West Palm. I've lived in LA. I've lived in Denver, Phoenix, Cleveland. I've lived all over. I have never seen this level of deception in a small government. This is my adopted town. I love Endicott. I love upstate New York. I have never seen this kind of, I don't know what it is, inattention. I, look at, look at the mayor right now. She has not paid any attention to anything that any of us have said. She has not looked up even once. Her lack of awareness, and Cheryl's also in this last debacle, um, I think that carries over into what we're seeing right now, is that they really don't care. I can't believe that they grew up here and they don't appreciate what a wonderful town this is and can be. Cheryl mentioned that, um, property values will go up if San Gil comes in. We're seeing just the opposite. We're seeing people, real estate people, because we know a lot of them, um, saying that people don't even want to look in Endicott. So property values are already going down. Your property values are going down. Yes, all of you. They're all going down. And the only way we can reverse that is to not allow San Gil in here. And I don't know if there's some underhandedness going on. I feel that there is. Um, I want to thank Ted, and I want to thank Pat, and I want to thank all the people who have been so involved in this, because just, just like Diane said, we will not stop. No matter, you pass this tonight, great, but then whatever the dirty dealing is, we will not stop. We will keep going. We will keep hiring people. We will keep fighting, and eventually, maybe even get rid of the people that don't seem to care about their constituents. Anyway, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. I have 607-296-0671.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep. Yep, you're on.
Uh, hi there. This is, uh, this is Bill Houston. I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Um, so a lot of us, I've been talking to a lot of people about this, and everybody's confused. Why is this thing being rescinded? It doesn't make any sense. The mayor's explanation doesn't make any sense. She says that she wants to rescind the special restrictions on recycling facilities because the DEC is doing such a good job. That is gobbledygook. So first of all, what the mayor has said all along, that this zoning change is adding special restrictions on recycling facilities to protect the village, it's ridiculous on its face. In fact, the zoning law change was to remove the express prohibition on incinerators. And also, I just found this out, uh, municipalities are expressly preempted from adding special restrictions on battery recycling facilities... restrictions on battery recycling facilities, according to New York State law. It was passed in 2010, the New York State Rechargeable Battery Recycling Act. It's at ECL Section 27-1811. Now, as to, and now as to the statement that the DEC has done a good job. In fact, the DEC permit is illegal about five different ways. Beginning with the fact that we should have gotten a type 1 seeker, that's required by law, 6NYCRR, 617.4B2, because you had to change the zoning. The size of Endicott's industrial zone, according to my estimate, is 560 acres. The threshold is 25 acres. Is 560 greater than 25? So because the DEC misclassified this as an unlisted action, we were denied a coordinated review. DEC lied and said that they, okay, let's not say lie. DEC made a factually erroneous statement, saying that a coordinated review has been done. God bless Village Attorney Bob McCurdyck, he called him out on this in a letter in February, and Joe Slusar, the attorney for DEC, came back and said, "Oh, that was a typo." So we were also denied an environmental impact statement. We were denied typically four public hearings that come with a full EIS, starting with scoping. So it's, it seems to me in a lot of people that the mayor is acting as an agent for San Gil, and she has stated that she is for the project. So if this, if this, if what's going on here tonight is legit, this means that San Gil thinks that there's something wrong that they have to fix by pulling back this bad law. And one flaw is that an incinerator is still a prohibited land use even after this zoning change, and this was pointed out brilliantly by Claudia Braemer in her zoning board appeal, which is to be heard on July 30th. I'm, I got one more thing to say. And another thing about this is that the 5/7, the May 7 vote failed. This thing is already dead, and nobody even realizes it. It failed three to two. It needed to pass by a supermajority, four to one, because you ignored the requirements in the 239 review that came back from the county. That triggered a supermajority vote. This thing is already dead. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Had Ellen counted? Just got to unmute yourself first.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're on.
I think this is only the second time residents and others have had an opportunity to speak publicly to the board, and I thank you for that opportunity, but I hope that you will increase the times that the, your residents can speak to you. You're in a very special position as the advocate for the residents of Endicott. At the moment, you have disappointed a great many people because of your support for the San Gil recycling process. In their process to recycle the lithium ion batteries, they use incineration in that processing. I am happy, and I share the same thoughts as the others who spoke, that you're going to rescind this law because it provides absolutely no protections for the village. You have the right to put in protections for the village. You can say you want no high-temperature thermal treatment or incineration to be used in the processing or manufacturing of anything. You have the right to do that. You are the advocate for the residents of Endicott. They are looking for someone in an official capacity to speak up for them, and you are lucky to have such an engaged community. It's very special. People talking about democracy here and democracy there, it exists, and it's alive in your little village. You should be proud and want to protect it as much as you can. You have some wonderful people working to protect the village. You just need to join them, and you will be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. And next I have Carol Ayton.
Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, you're on.
I'd just like to say that I'm very glad that you have decided to rescind this law, because as much as you've said that you put in restrictions to protect the community, I don't believe that the law does that, because there is nothing in the wording that protects against hazardous materials hurting the community and the residents. Therefore, I feel this was a very bad law to begin with, and if you do plan on writing a new law, I hope that you will put in controls in there to prevent hazardous materials from being disputed in Endicott to hurt all the residents. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, I'm going back to the phones here. Have 540-412-6606? Would you like to say anything on the public hearing? Okay. Uh, next I have 607-765-3345? Would you like to make any comments on the public hearing? On to, I have call-in user 3. That's call-in user 3. If you'd like to make any comments on the public hearing? Okay. And the last phone I have, it just says iPhone. So, just iPhone, if you'd like to make any comments on the public hearing?
Did you get, um? Last four, did you just hear 0523?
That's Eileen.
That's me.
Yeah.
(laughing).
Um, that's all I'm seeing, unless anyone else sees anything.
2421's Ted.
2421's us, main line, yep. I have 9427's Ted. Oh, I got one more here. 607-4271002, if you'd like to make any comments?
No.
Okay. That's all I'm seeing at this point.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Let me take a vote on it. Would you take a roll call, please?
Uh, trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dornar?
Ted.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
And trustee Warner, to close?
Sorry, I was muted, yes.
Okay.
All right. For a business, I want to close the public hearing.
I, I have something I would, I have something I'd like to say before we leave that topic. This law was organized by Linda back in February, and then on May 7, we voted to approve the law, the new zoning law. And then at the last meeting, Linda made a motion to rescind the law, which I believe she was correct to do that, and I'm impressed that she's willing to correct a mistake in public like that. And there's not many politicians that would do that, but if everybody was listening, like 100% of the people that spoke tonight are against, are in favor of rescinding the law. There's two things that worry me. One is worried, the one thing that worries me is the many procedural errors that were made in passing the law, which puts the village at risk. And the other thing that worries me is that the board could take a vote that would result in a lawsuit against the village, and we've been warned in writing about that possible lawsuit. So what I would like to do, I would like to make a motion, and I would like to make a motion to rescind the local law making recycling facilities a permitted use, a permitted use in industrial zones, that the board approved on May 7, 2020, and that this new law to rescind shall be filed in Albany no more than five minutes after the filing of the May 7 vote that we took to approve the law.
We haven't, it hasn't been filed. There is no law, and we don't even have the petitions back yet. We're waiting for the petitions, Ted, and you know that, because you have talked to Delta yourself.
We voted on May, excuse me, we voted on May 7 to approve the law, and there was no contingency on counting the votes. So I had this motion, I can read it again if you want me to, and I would like to have a second on it. And the motion is, I make a motion to rescind the local law making recycling facilities a permitted use in the industrial zones, that the board approved on May 7, 2020, and that this new law to rescind, no more than five minutes after the filing of the May 7 vote that we took to approve the law.
I don't even know if the law yet.
Ted, in order for, to adopt this local law rescinding the previous law, we have to conduct a seeker, just like we did the first time, just like we do with most laws that require, or all laws that require a seeker. So the first step, if you want to move forward with this tonight, the first step would be to do the seeker review, and then I've prepared a resolution, which I forwarded to everyone, and you could approve that resolution, which would repeal the previous law. So the question that the board will have to figure out tonight is whether or not you want to take those steps this evening, even though we don't have the results of the protest petition, or to wait until we get the results of the protest petition and then go forward. And that's a decision that the board is going to have to make this evening, but I just want to make sure, Ted, that we're doing this in a proper order, which would be the seeker first, and then the approval of the law.
Yeah, I would, I would say we should do the seeker. In fact, I thought it was on the agenda to do that tonight, but we've had so many different agendas that were sent to us. I think, I don't know what, which agenda is the final one, but it was, I thought we had it on the agenda to do the seeker tonight.
I didn't have to.
No, I don't think it's on there.
Okay, but I would, we could do it tonight. We've got to do it, we've got to do it sometime anyway.
Well, we don't have the seeker information, Ted.
I emailed everyone the seeker information. There was parts 1, 2, 3, and the appendix were emailed to everyone before this meeting.
Senator Paquette? Is it included in there?
Yeah.
It could be, because we have a lot.
Bob, yeah, I've got a question. Is there, we talked about this earlier. Can we, as a board, vote to move ahead with the, the May 7 law without the petitions?
Yeah, we're.
And then vote quickly to rescind and get it done with tonight?
Right, we're in a procedurally very unique situation here, which doesn't come up too often, and the reason is because these protest petitions have not been finalized. We thought they would have been back to us by now, but unfortunately, they aren't. So the initial plan had always been to wait until we received the protest petitions, and on the same night that they're received and approved, have a vote to rescind the law. That's, that's been the plan all along. We thought that that was all going to happen this evening, and unfortunately, we didn't get the protest petition. So there's a couple of different ways we could do this. We could either wait until we get those protest petitions, hopefully in the next few days, schedule a special meeting, and then take up both this law and the protest petitions at the same time, file them both, one right after the other, so there's no gap. Or there could be a vote to approve the rescission tonight, which would be a little bit unusual in that we would be rescinding it prior to the receipt of the protest petition. It's not exactly how we had planned to do it. So those are the two options.
We give you the protest.
Can I make a motion to?
If this whole thing now envoys from the get-go, we wouldn't have to do anything else.
Yeah.
Well, if the protest petitions are valid, and the May 7 vote therefore did not have the sufficient four votes, then, then there would be no need to repeal the law. If we went ahead and repealed the law anyways, it's just a nullity. It doesn't hurt, it doesn't help, it would just be essentially meaningless if those protest petitions are successful.
Can I, can we make a motion to, to just forget about the petitions and move on to the rescission of the law tonight? Yes or no?
I think we, I think the people that have looked at it, at least halfway closely, believe that there was never, there's no chance that there's going to be enough petitions by May 7. And, so I, I mean, that's, that's what I believe, I think, there's other people believe that, too. I think it's almost impossible that there can be enough by May 7. So I think if we go ahead with the way we're talking, it might, we're going to have to do it anyway. I don't know why we shouldn't just go ahead and do it tonight.
I feel more comfortable waiting. I don't like to do things to you guys.
Did, Anthony, have you checked your emails lately to see if I was?
I could check, no. Yeah.
Well, Bob, you mentioned a few minutes ago to take a vote to rescind it. Ahead of the other information, can that be done? I know as you said, it's kind of backwards, but can we take that vote tonight and then do a special meeting if we can't get the votes, and have a special meeting in a couple of days and go through it that way?
Yeah, yeah, special.
Well, we would have to do the seeker tonight, that's what Bob said.
Well, you have to do the seeker before you vote on the law.
Okay.
So is that where, is that where you're pressing?
Yeah, let's do the seeker, and then we'll.
Well, I didn't, I didn't. Can we have a vote on doing the seeker? Can we, can we vote on whether we do the seeker tonight right now? Are we allowed to vote on it?
Yeah, I mean, you could certainly do the seeker, if that's what you wanted to do.
The seeker should go pretty, the seeker should go pretty quickly, correct?
No, I'm trying to be a shame, thanks.
Yeah, but it's, it's all no, it should be all no's. It should go a lot faster than the last one did. Five hours is your time.
I could go check quick, because it won't update, it probably won't update from here, but I can go.
I'm trying to get him on the phone and just get through Mary.
I think we should wait.
I mean, do you want, maybe me and you call him tomorrow or something, or?
Yeah, call him tomorrow, because Ted wanted to prolong this, and I don't want to do anything without the petitions. And just, I mean, because they still could be good, because Ted had them redo.
The village spent money on it, like, leave it not done.
That's, oh, you have a.
A thousand dollars to review these petitions, damn it.
And Ted had them redo different things, so that doesn't mean that they're going to be not good. I don't know. I mean, they could be good, and then we don't have to go through the seeker or anything. Then it's just finished, and we don't, and it's ended. So I'd like to wait, because they might be good. I mean... I mean, hey.
I mean, they did get quite a few signatures.
Yeah, and Ted has, Ted has the redoing it for different formulas. So I don't know what these formulas are going to do, how they're going to.
No, no, they're redoing it according to what the law says the formulas are. I didn't make up any new formulas for them.
I didn't know. I knew you said something and I did not know what they were and I thought perhaps it was the second way of doing things.
No, Bob and Anthony and I talked to him. All three of us were on the phone at that time.
I just didn't know why they were redoing them. I thought perhaps they, they thought there was a discrepancy of some sort, that's why they were redoing them. I did not.
No, no.
What happened was there are, there are three different statutory tests that these, um, these protest petitions have to be put through. And Delta performed one of them, but not the other two. And so we kind of straightened them out and got them back on track to do all three tests. But, um, that unfortunately has not been finished by tonight.
Yeah, as of 5:40 tonight, I don't have any.
As of 5:40.
Yeah, that's my last email.
So.
I can see.
You want to run it?
I could check if there's anything sent.
Anthony's going to go.
Yeah, if I have anything.
Real quick, if you've got any late breaking news on these things.
Late breaking news.
Well, if we were to do the seeker tonight and then re, uh, vote to rescind the law, if those petitions showed that there was enough, that means the law was valid. It would have been a super majority, or it would be, um, that means the law was stopped. Or no, that means that it had to be a super majority. And either way, we could still go ahead with this tonight and get this done without pushing this off another, another month.
We can have a special meeting.
Call a special.
We would like to call a special meeting to get this over with.
We talked about before was to call a special meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, no, you're right. I don't want to wait another month either. I'd like to call a special meeting to do the petitions and then vote. And that way we're doing it in order, that's all. That's what I would like to do, but again, you guys can make a motion and whoever, whoever wants to make a motion to do whatever will vote on it.
Well, I would make a motion that we do the seeker now while we're here. And then when the seeker is done, we can decide if we want to vote on it.
I'll second that.
Have to wait till Anthony comes back to take a roll call.
So it's a motion to move forward with the seeker review right now?
I don't have anything, I don't have anything from Roger today.
Uh, what has happened since you've been gone? Ted made a motion to do the seeker tonight and Pat has seconded it, so now we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Connectney?
No.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
No.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Jackson? So that was to perform the seeker tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we got it.
We'd like to wait.
Those petitions are good and we're doing it for none.
Yeah, and since they have two other ways of doing it, like Eileen said, we spent so much money on it. It would be nice to know, because they might be good.
It would be ridiculous to leave, to spend the money and not even wait for the results.
No, I do believe I had a motion for.
You petitions, we're checking it.
Motion to call for public hearing on the outdoor cafe permit. We updated a few things.
For August 17th?
Yes.
Would you like to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner? Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Now we have resolutions of local laws. We have a traffic signal replacement Kinley Avenue and Watson Boulevard. It's our traffic signal upgrade. We have a motion to pass this.
Yeah, Trustee Connectney?
Yes.
Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Now we have a, a resolution for the aviation capital project. This is the one that we did, we paid the seeker for, for airport.
I make a motion to approve the aviation capital project. I'll second that.
Yeah, the roll call, have Trustee Connectney, Trustee Dorner?
Yes.
Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes.
Now, we are going to table the, the next two, the governing membership for the zoning board of appeals and the governing membership of the planning board. Those have both been tabled, until we have a chance to go over that. So we don't have an executive session, so now we have board member comments. Eileen, our, I'm sorry, Trustee Connectney, if you've got anything you'd like to say?
Can I just back up one second?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I have, um, back, maybe this was, um, taken care of before I left. The Trustee Warner made a motion to, uh, rescind the local law. Can't be filed in Albany five minutes after this one. Was there ever anything? I had it open-ended here, I didn't.
We didn't have a second.
And he made, he did make another motion that we, that was what we voted on when you came back.
Okay, that was the seeker?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that doesn't, my motion still stands.
I just don't have a resol, I don't have a.
Ted, are you, you're looking to make a motion to approve the, the local law rescinding, um, the recycling facilities law, um, even without conducting a seeker review?
No, we would have to do the seeker review to do, to rescind it.
Okay. Okay. I don't know if I missed something when I left because it was.
Well, we got kind of confused. You didn't miss much, no, we got kind of confused.
Okay.
We're awfully quiet.
Okay.
All right, board members' comments. This is our new section that we added. Um, so now this is when board members can make the comments that, that, uh, the thing they've been thinking about all night. So Eileen, have you got anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm jumbled.
All right, uh, Trustee Dorner, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, uh, I'd like to check with everybody's availability to, uh, have a immediate, uh, board meeting once these petitions come in.
Oh, yes.
Whether it be this week, next week.
Sure, hopefully this week.
I agree, I, I think I'm pretty much. Just not Thursday night, if I can help it. Because, no, it's the first hockey game in ye, in months. But I can make it before that, so we, we'll work it out. We'll see, whenever the petitions come back, they come back.
I'm available.
Yes.
So for a special meeting? We just need the 72-hour notice?
Yeah, we'll have to, um, give 72-hour notice for a special meeting. Um, so, you know, there's no telling when exactly that will be, hopefully early next week.
Right. Okay.
So this, are we doing this for Thursday, or what are we doing?
No, no, Ted asked what our availab, I'm sorry. Ted asked what our availability was and Bob said that we have to, uh, give 72-hours notice when we do have this special meeting. So I think pretty much all of us are excited to get this done and over with. So I think as soon as those petitions come back, I think we're all agreeable to what Pat has requested.
Yes.
I think he's requesting to set up a time right now.
We do have petitions.
We don't know when we're getting the petitions yet, Ted.
If they come in tomorrow, could we do it a Friday afternoon or what's Bob's availability?
Mm, that's right, we do need a lawyer.
That's Bob.
Um, I'm booked from 1, we could find a time. Yeah, I'm booked from 1 to 2, other than that.
Why don't we, uh, why don't we just do it for a week from tonight?
We don't know when it's going to be in.
That gives him time to get them, the petitions done and, uh, that gives other people time to.
Did he give you a timeframe?
We thought they'd be done last week.
Before the, before this meeting was.
Yeah, we expected them last week, so heaven only knows. I mean, if it took him all that time to do one and now he's got two other things to look at, heaven only knows how long it's going to take.
Well, if they come in tomorrow.
Yes.
And you have 72-hours, that puts us into Saturday.
Mm. I don't care, I'll come in on.
So Monday? Saturday morning, I don't, I'll do whatever it takes.
I would do that. I, I have no problem with that. Let's, we'll just wait till we get them in.
If they came in tomorrow, 72-hours would be Friday though.
Are you available, do you want to just do Monday, like a week from today?
Get all the canceled, I mean, cancel the meeting. Don't get them back. But at least it's, uh, you know.
Okay, okay. Is that what, is that a motion you'd like to make, Pat?
Yeah, let's do 72-hours from the time they're done.
All right.
If it's Friday, Saturday morning.
Or we'll say Monday.
I'll do whatever it takes.
That's right. It's people who want to make an emotion, so we'll do it Pat's way.
Did you say, do you want to do, just set it for Monday or do you want to?
Say 72-hours after they're finished, whenever we get them in.
Can, can we meet on the weekend?
Uh, no, I, I, I don't think this is the kind of thing that should be done on a weekend.
You're probably right, yeah.
It should be done on a normal weeknight when people are used to, you know, attending meetings. This is a public meeting.
True, yeah.
Um, yeah. What if we just schedule a meeting right now for Monday night? And with the hopes that we get this thing done by then?
Hey, what if we get them Thursday or Friday?
We'll have it.
We don't have to wait till Wednesday or something.
No, if we're making the meeting tonight, we're already giving them 72-hours notice. No matter what time, they could come in Sunday, next Sunday and we've set the meeting 72-hours.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I mean. If you set it now for Monday, if they come in Friday afternoon, we still have the meeting Monday. We don't have to wait till.
Yeah, even if they came in Monday morning, we could have it Monday night.
Uh-huh.
That's true.
Okay, so Monday?
Do you want to make a motion to schedule a special meeting on Monday, uh, July 20th? I'm sorry, July 27th? At what time?
Can we do it at 6 please?
I was going to ask that too.
Are you okay with that, Pat?
6 on Monday?
Yeah.
Ted, are you good at 6? You good at 6 next Monday?
6 o'clock?
Yeah.
That's good with me.
Okay.
Okay.
Why don't we, uh, just touch base maybe? Um, with Roger tomorrow?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Maybe light a little fire.
Oh, why don't we have a vote on?
Okay, uh, who made that, that's Pat's motion for the meeting?
Uh-huh.
Monday, okay.
I'll second that.
Um, do a roll call on that, Eileen?
Yeah.
Uh, Trustee Dorner? Trustee Chapman?
Yes.
Trustee Warner?
Yes. And it is 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, now do you have any other comments you'd like to make, Trustee Dorner?
I'm all talked out, no problem.
Okay, okay, how about you, Trustee Chapman? Okay, Trustee Warner, do you have any other final comments you'd like to make?
No, I've said plenty tonight, I don't need to do more.
Okay, then, Eileen, you're up.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, yell aye. Aye, yell aye, Ted.
I would say yes.
Excellent, very good.
Thank you, everyone.
There we go, we're done. I had to use it because you made me get it out.
Check, check, check. Okay, we're coming back, hang on. Hang on. Wow, what just happened? What? What just happened? Somebody explain to me what just happened. What just happened? Where is? What the heck? What the heck just happened? I'm just, I'm just tidying, I'm doing a little tidying. Give me a second. So, what just happened? Did they? They didn't rescind the vote tonight? I gotta get my headphones. They didn't. Am I getting that right? They didn't. They didn't rescind the vote tonight, right? Did I get that wrong? This is bad. This is what, you know, Ted mentioned. And some other people have mentioned this too to me. Ted Warner mentioned at the last village meeting, he was like, this is a big charade, it's a charade, it's, uh, Linda Jackson, this is an elaborate trick. What's going to happen is, Ted said this. He says something's going to happen and they're not going to rescind the vote. And guess what they have to do? They've reached a time limit. I don't, maybe I'm misunderstanding. I wish somebody would leave something, leave a message in the chat and help me understand this. I wish, uh, I wish, uh, wait a second, um, hold on. Okay, we might get a, we might get a special caller. I'm not going to say who it is. I would love to get a special caller tonight, if the special caller would call me. So, uh, that could help us do some analysis. So we'll see. We'll see, the invite's been put out. Um, my understanding was that if they didn't rescind the vote, if they didn't rescind the, rescind the voting change, adding recycling facilities to Endicott's industrial zone. If they didn't rescind it tonight, I thought, I mean, one thing that comes to mind is, I guess if they don't rescind it, they have, they, I guess legally, they have to drive it to Albany, mail it overnight, something like that to Albany to meet a particular deadline and they give it to the Secretary of State and the Secretary of State maybe puts it, puts, you know, publishes it in the register somewhere maybe? Endicott's changed their local zoning law. Then what's going to happen? San Gil's going to go get a building permit. That could happen on Wednesday. San Gil might get a building permit on Wednesday, friends. That's my understanding. I could be, I could be, I'm not an attorney. But that was my prior understanding was that the danger is if they didn't repeal this thing tonight, we could get a, a building permit. Now, there's a couple of things to discuss about that, okay? So one question is, does this facility, is this facility subject to a site plan review? That would have to happen prior to a building permit being issued. That question apparently is in the discretion of code enforcement, which is, um, Brian Botford and Joe Griswold. I need to, I need to try to figure, I mean, I'm going to try to figure out tomorrow. I need to, I need to try to figure, I mean, I'm gonna try to figure out tomorrow. I'm gonna make some calls and figure out, do they, does the, does the code enforcement, does code enforcement plan on requiring a site plan review prior to a building permit being issued? This is suddenly a really critical question to get answered. Do we have anybody watching? I'm just curious. Cause I'm, I'm running my mouth. I might have gotten, uh, waiting. Okay, at least. Okay, I didn't... Alright, so, I wish I had this person's permission, let me ask. Get rid of that one. Okay. So, right now, I'm not gonna tell you who said this, but let's just say... Uh, somebody with legal knowledge that has familiarity with this case, I'm trying to get permission to, to read this on the air and give you the proper attribution, because if you knew who this person was, uh, it's, it's, let's just say it's a credible source, okay? This person just told me, uh, first of all, let me read you the first comment, um... First comment was, uh, "Take every opportunity to blast," well, oh, boy, I don't, I mean, for, I think this is, I'm not attributing this to anybody yet, okay? So, this is an anonymous source. The anonymous source says, "Take every opportunity to blast the mayor for refusing to rescind the law." I didn't, I was watching this. I was aware of this issue beforehand. And I'm just like, (mumbling), because, because Pat and Ted are just like, "Oh, okay, let's set up a spec-" You know, "What do we do? Well, you know, let's, uh, let's wait on the, well, we wanna, we spent all the money on the engineering firm, let's, let's wait for the report." Okay, well, let's have a, it's just so, sounds so mundane. I was, I was (growling). I was low, I was like, it was so soothing. I was lulled off to sleep. I fell asleep. I didn't really fall asleep, I'm just saying, I was just like, (mumbling) I was just like, you know, looking at my watch, kinda thing. I don't, don't wear a watch, but you're looking at the clock, come on, come on, you know? Meanwhile, what they're not doing is rescind, is rescinding the law! This was the, this was the big fear. This was the big fear, and it happened. It did happen. And I, I just, I missed it because Pat and Ted weren't making a big deal about it. They, they seemed like they were fine with it, and it just didn't, I was like, when I got this email from this person that said, "Take every opportunity to blast the mayor for refusing to rescind the law," it kinda like snapped, it snapped me out of my slumber. And I'm like, I'm like, "Wait, what?" And this person goes on to say, "She is going against her word," and, hmm, boy. Let me just look, I got an email. I kinda wait for tonight, yes, that's fine, it's totally public. Thank you for checking. Okay, I got permission. I got permission to read this. This is from Claudia Bramer, the attorney for No Burn Broom. So, this person is credible, this person, uh... This person is, uh, is, is an attorney, and she has knowledge of this case. So, she says basically, "The mayor's going against her word and she's, uh, maybe not speaking truthfully to the people of the village." "The board has a month to prepare for the public hearing and take," "The board had a month to prepare for the public hearing and take action tonight, and her decision to wait is extremely disturbing and telling." And since I'm reading Claudia's comment, I will tell you that Claudia's one of the people that predicted this. Ted, in addition to Ted Warner, Claudia earlier told me she thought this was a ruse. And I was just, I didn't even, it happened, and I didn't, I'm like, I'm mad at myself, okay? So then Claudia goes on to say, "At least the special meeting is set for one week from tonight. Mark your calendars to watch again. Six PM, put it on your bat, your bat calendar, on your, on your, on your bat iPhone. Uh, put it down, one week from tonight." And then she goes on to say, "Claudia Bramer, thank you for letting me read this on the air, Claudia. Waiting for the petition analysis is a total ruse. The petitions would be moot if they were really going to move forward with the repeal." Excellent point. Do you see what she's saying? What Claudia is saying is, that, are they sincere about repealing the, the law? Yes or no? If you're sincere about repealing the law, just do it. What do you gotta wait for the? You're waiting to figure out if the, if the, if there was a supermajority vote, if the law was legally passed to begin with? I mean, maybe, maybe there's a technical, maybe there's something I'm not seeing about this, right? Maybe there is a technical reason for, for waiting. In other words, maybe it has something to do with, like, I don't know this procedure about when, you know, a village passes a law, and then it has to be entered into the state record somehow. This, the, you know, the, the secretary of state, I guess, you know, records these local, local laws somehow. So, maybe if the vote never passed... You know what I mean? Maybe if the vote was null, because the thing failed, because they got enough of the protest petitions, maybe that's a good reason to wait. And that's a good thing, because the other thing that I would like to, uh, put on the agenda is the fact that the supermajority vote, there was another reason. You don't, I mean, the vote failed. The vote failed, end of story. We don't need to go for the, wait for the protest petition, and, um... Okay, well, this is the official comment from Claudia, okay? "The board had a month to prepare for the public hearing and take action tonight, and the mayor's refusal to take action is, is extremely disturbing and telling. Waiting for the petition analysis is a total ruse. The petitions would be moot if they were really going to move towards, with the repeal, forward with the repeal. Hopefully, the public pressure will be enough to get the board to repeal the law at the special meeting a week from tonight." That's better. I'm sorry I read it the way that I did. That's Claudia's official statement. There was one, anyway. This is her official statement, okay? I'm gonna, I'm gonna publish that somewhere on, on the internet, just to make sure that you see. In fact, let me put it up like this. This is... I'm just gonna put it up like this. Give me one second, please. Boy, that's great, being able to get feedback from the attorney in real time. Wow. Only on the Bill Houston podcast do you get that. Only on the Bill Houston, boy, I gotta manually do, I hate that. Hold on. I have to... Let's hopefully... Public pressure. Okay. Let me just, uh, frame it up for you. Okay. So this is, it shouldn't be, it should be more, oh, I just, I'm such a perfectionist. Hmm, I'm such a perf- Perf- okay, here it is. This is Claudia Bramer's official statement tonight, okay? This is the attorney for No Burn Broom. And let me just get rid, since I don't have a, an opening, I will put, this is her official statement. "The board had a month to prepare for the public hearing and take action tonight, and the mayor's refusal to take action tonight is extremely disturbing and telling. Waiting for the petition analysis is a total ruse. The petitions would be moot if they were really going to move forward with the repeal." Which is right. Uh, unless there's some technicality that I, I'm not seeing, that Claudia's not seeing. Maybe there is some little technical reason why it makes more sense. If, if you can nullify the law, maybe you don't have to drive the thing to Albany. I'm not sure, I'm just speculating here, okay? Um, "The petitions would be moot, hopefully the public pressure will be enough to keep, to get the board to repeal the law at the special meeting a week from tonight. Thanks, Claudia." There we go. That is the official word from the attorney from No Burn Broom, about what you just saw tonight. So, thank you, Claudia, very much for letting me read that on the air. So I just wanna, uh... I was a little rushed with my comments, and I just wanna see if I can, uh, kinda go through it with you in a little bit more detail, because I did the three-minute version, and then I got, I got really excited trying to, trying to get the thing done, you know, trying to read it all in time. Get it done in the time allotted. So, let me turn this one off for now. Thank you, Claudia, for letting me read that on the air. Let's go back to this one. And again, I gotta... Gotta do some fancy, some fancy footwork. Or, not really footwork, but finger clicking. I just gotta, speaking of finger clicking, I just gotta say this. So, um... I saw Linda Jackson, and I saw Cheryl up at Round Top, at the thing. The Round Top event, you know? And I told them, I told them what I thought. I thought that, that thing was a witch hunt. And, wait, you wanna tell, you wanna write in the streets, you wanna, you wanna paint the streets to say, "Black Lives Matter," and, but you prohibit me from saying that, "I can't say all lives matter, that's a racist slogan. I can't say white lives matter, that's a racist slogan." Like, what? Are you, and then they say, "Oh, but when we say black lives matter, we don't mean that only black lives matter." And that's when I wanna go (mumbling) for about five minutes, I just wanna shake my head. And I wanna make, like, Monty Python kinda crazy person noises, like (mumbling). "I want to smash bricks against the side of my head." The Gumbees, you know? I wanna be a Gumby, because it doesn't make any sense what they're saying. It's crazy, and I have to say it. I know most of my friends are Democrats, but this is a Democrat, Black Lives Matter is a Democrat psy-op, and I can't believe that, well, I guess it is somewhat consistent, since it's their psy-op, that the head of the Broom County Democratic Party, I mean, not only, uh, asked for the resignation of a village trustee, I mean, I'm putting aside, I mean, I got my issues with, with Cheryl and, uh, and Linda having to do with this incinerator, but let's just look at this one issue, okay? She should resign because of, click, she did this. This is why she should resign. Click. She went, (mumbling). She went, click. She should resign, because she went, click. Meanwhile... Who am I gonna talk about now? Maybe we'll do a segment about Dear Donna. Let's do a, just do a Donna Lupardo segment, because we got some, some Donna updates. Um, meanwhile, Donna Lupardo has been lying. Okay, maybe it's not lying. Lying, to say somebody's lying, you have to know what their intent is, okay? Let's just say that she's, for a year and a half, coming up on two years, Donna Lupardo has told false and misleading statements to her constituents, uh, directly in emails, uh, maybe in person, definitely to the press and the media about the San Gil incinerator. In fact, she didn't, she never called, she never will call it, I mean, I can't say never will, but I haven't ever heard Donna Lupardo say anything about incinerator, incineration, burning, high temperature, cancer-causing, it's just, she can't say it. And I showed you, go wa, if you haven't seen it already, go watch the, uh, the Donna Lupardo hot mic interview up on Round Top. Kind of a magical place, Round Top. I was just like (mumbling), I'm just minding my own business, I was really chill. And she comes up and starts talking to me, and I'm just making friendly with her, you know? And I ask her, "Hey, should the DEC, shouldn't the DEC follow the law?" And she's like (mumbling). Her brain starts misfiring, you know? It's like an old V8, you know, with a couple of, it's like, you could see. She's like (mumbling), she's like tilt, like (mumbling). It's like buzzers going off, like alarm bells going off in her brain, like (mumbling). "Don't you think the DEC should follow the law?" And she's like, "No, I, I don't, I, I can't. I'm, I'm not prepared. I, 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 I..." "That's not an easy answer for you, Donna Lupardo. Should the DEC follow the law?" She's like (mumbling). She was like Bill the Cat, she's like (mumbling). You could see a, you know, a fuse blowing in her brain, she's like (mumbling). It's like (mumbling), like, reset. "Donna, shouldn't the DEC follow the law?" "Donna, what about an EIS, considering all that Endicott's been through?" "No, I, I don't, I don't want, I can't, I don't wanna go there with you right now, today, at this minute. I (mumbling). I'm not prepared." Donna Lupardo has been pushing this facility, promoting it, like a project sponsor. Got like a good public relations hired operative for the applicant. She has been promoting this from the beginning, which was September... Hold on. What's the date of this? Oh, I wish I had the nice mock-up. I don't think I have it handy. I made a nice mock-up for the video that I made on this. September twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, you see that? Okay. E S, E S D, Empire State Development President, CEO and Commissioner Howard Zemsky. "It's wonderful. Incinerators are wonderful." That's not what he says, you can read what he says, but I wanna show you this. Don Ashmir, Metallica Commodities, "Yeah, baby. We're getting, we want, we wanna come and burn some stuff in your town. And you're gonna let us, because Empire, we got Empire State Development in our pocket. Yeah, we got, we got a grant, big grant, Seventy-Six West Competition, yeah, yeah. Clean energy, it's the clean energy revolution. Incinerators are part of the clean energy revolution." Broom County Executive Jason Garner, let's read his, okay? "Any, any day," I love this one, I always like to read it with a, uh... "Any day, you find out." Let me just frame this up, one second. I love this. "Any day." I like to read it with the, uh, "Any day." Wait a minute. I'm sorry, live TV, here we go. You gotta have fun with this. You gotta have fun with this. So what did he say? So, what did he say? Broom County Executive Jason Garner, this was September... September 27th, 2018. Empire State Development announces a whole bunch of millions we're gonna give to build an incinerator in Endicott. Look through this, you'll never find incinerator, burning, smelting, high temperature, rotary kiln, burning, nothing like that in this. It's, it's, it's green, it's green jobs, high-tech green jobs. Who else says green? That's the only green. So, let's see what Broom County Executive Jason Garner says. "Any day." That's the voice. It's the, uh, when you're reading public relations written by Stephen Donnelly of Stephen Donnelly Associates, you have to read it in a, in a, in a very serious voice. Broom County Executive Jason Garner said, "Any day you find out more jobs are coming to your county is a good day, is a great..." "Any, any day you find out more jobs are coming to your county is a great day. This announcement is another major win for Endicott and Broom County thanks to the continued hard work of Empire State Development and Governor Cuomo. This community is being revitalized with cancer-causing compounds into, oh, wait, like rewind, and our local economy is being transformed. Yeah, property values are plummeting before this thing is even permitted. And guess what happens when the, when people leave the area and the property values plummet? So does the tax base. We are attracting innovative companies who are recognizing the great benefits of doing business in the southern tier, and with that, bringing much-needed jobs to our community." Here's my favorite, this is what we're here for. This is what we're here for. Okay, Assemblywoman Donna Lupardo, what does she have to say? "This new recycling facility, not an incinerator, will complement the work done by Imperium III." This is, remember, if you've been watching my show, you know the techniques that they use. The Stephen Donnelly, the public relations spin doctor stuff, there's like a table. There's like seven or eight things they always do. I've talked about, I've put it, I've put the graphic on the show before. Basically, one of the things is, is that they're always conflating it with either Stan Whittingham, the Nobel Prize guy that figured out the chemistry of lithium ion, or they conflate it with Imperium III, the manufacturing. This will co, the, the incinerator, wait, oh, the recycling facility will complement the work being done by Imperium III, New York, in Endicott. Where are they? Are they, are they, are they building batteries? Where are the jobs? Donish Mir mentioned in one of the, one of his presentations, he says, they try, they tried to find out what's going on with Imperium III, and Imperium III says, "Hey, you wanna, you wanna come and have lunch?" And Donish is like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, let's have lunch." And they're like, "Here, you, uh, you know, here's this non-disclosure agreement that you gotta fill out before we have lunch." And even Donish Mir was like, "What?" So, what's, Imperium III is vaporware. They're not building batteries. They bought a whole bunch of equipment, and I don't know what. I'm getting a couple different stories. I heard one that they, they shoved it into a warehouse. Somebody else says that it's over there and building 258, maybe? I think it's 258 where they have it. As far as I know, they're not, they're not manufacturing batteries, okay? "As well as ongoing research on lithium-ion batteries by Binghamton University." There it is, there's Stan Whittingham connection again. "High-tech manufacturing was the cornerstone of the region's economy for many years, and this announcement makes another step forwards tor, so, sorry, another step towards its rebirth in Broom County." It's Donna Lupardo. Donna Lupardo is in deep. Um, anyway, where was I? I'm not sure. I'm just gonna go back to my original presentation, cuz I, I get lost like that. I'm not sure where, how I got on Donna. But what I wanna tell you about is, basically, I just wanna go over my comments. So, because so few people really understand what's going on. First of all, I'm gonna try to just zip through this as quickly as possible, cuz I know I get long-winded. Prior to May 7th, 2020, there was an express prohibition Okay, so I hope that didn't come through. This is so easy, friends, it's so easy. "But Mayor Linda Jackson's public relations gobbledegook repeated dutifully by the corporate media, like Jeff Platsky and all the other news outlets." I'm not gonna go through the names, because some of them have done some good. Chloe Vincente, I'm gonna single out, she's done some good work. Bob Joseph has done some good work. I hope you're doing okay, Bob. You, uh, you've been on vacation for a while, and I'm a little worried about you, but, uh, you know, I think you're, you've done some, you've done a lot of good work on this, Bob, and I really appreciate your honesty and your integrity. But everybody else is talking gobbledegook, you know, what is it? "It's adding special restrictions." I titled this video "Adding Special Restrictions", cuz it's such a joke. Prior to, let's go over it, it's so simple. Prior to May 7th, there was a clear and unambiguous express prohibition on incinerators in the Village of Endicott in any zone. And that's because it's not, you look at, look up the, uh, look up the Endicott zoning law. I wish I could, hold on. Here it is. So, you look up... Sorry. Look up the Endicott zoning law. Why can't I zoom into that? I can't zoom in. So, anyway, it's 300 dash, what is it? 22.3 uses. If you look at 300 dash 22.3, it says, "Uses not listed are expressly prohibited." And you look, and if you look here in this list and look for anything like incinerator, we've been through this before, friends, there's nothing here. Go look it up yourself. "Uses not listed are expressly prohibited." Incinerators prior to May 7th of 2020, incinerators are ex, were expressly prohibited. They still are. Don't worry, I'm just being super technical with my speech. "In order to put an incinerator in the village, the, the village, the zoning had to be changed to remove the express prohibition." I don't know how to say that any, any more clear than that. To put an incinerator in the Village of Endicott, they had to change the zoning to remove the prohibition. Zoning is police powers. A zoning is like a fence or a brick wall to protect you from people throwing stuff at you, shooting whatever, bullets, or... It's a wall. It's a wall of protection to protect you from bad things that wanna come and get you and take your things or whatever. So, protection. Zoning is all about land uses. You put, uh, dangerous land uses, like, you know, cement plants or something, away in zones that are away from where people are living, or maybe where schools are, that kinda thing. That's the essence of zoning. One other thing you can do with zoning is prohibit certain land uses entirely. Now, I've heard this isn't possible absolutely everywhere, but it is possible in New York. Oh, no. My friend, they never called on my friend, had, had her hand, hand raised. They had to change the zoning to permit this thing. Mayor Linda Jackson repeatedly said that removing the prohibition on incinerators, that's what they had to do. She said, "We're, we're adding special restrictions on recycling facilities in order to protect the village." That's a gobbledegook. The analogy I made before, it's like there's been burglaries in the neighborhood recently, so you're, you're trying to add special protections on your house. So, a lot of people are adding locks on their doors, or adding, uh, wrought iron on their windows, they're adding physical barriers. But it's like Linda Jackson on her house, she removed the locks. She opened up the windows wide up. She put a sign on the front of her house and said, "Everything free, today only." And she called it "adding special restrictions". She's removing the protections and calling it "adding special restrictions" to protect you. It's backwards talk. It's opposite. It's opposite land talk. It's backwards talk, it's upside-down, crazy, goofy, bogus Stephen Donnelly upside-down talk. Public relations talk is what it is. So, you have to understand what was really going on. They had to remove the prohibition of incinerators. That's what they tried to do on May 5th. But they did it, oh, I have to say this. So, not only is it, is it crazy and absurd on its face, because it doesn't make any sense, it's opposite from what they're really doing. It turns out that Linda Jackson and the Village of Endicott could not add special restrictions on battery recycling facilities due to a state preemption. It's not legal. It's not legal. It's not legal. They could pass such a law, but it's never going to pass scrutiny. You want proof of that? You wanna know why I know something about this? Because I sho, I shot this video. I took this video. This is a historic video in the history of fracking, fighting fracking in New York. This is a historic video. It was the Middlefield-Dryden Appeal, and guess what it was all about? It was all about express preemption, state preemption. So, what this guy was saying, that's Scott Kirkowski. They call him a super attorney. And that's Deborah, so he's arguing for the Joint Land Owners Group of New York. And this is Deborah Goldberg, fabulous, she's great. She works for Earthworks. And she was arguing for Middlefield, uh, Middlefield or Dryden, I think. There was a couple different attorneys representing the different plaintiffs. But it was like they were, they, the cases were so similar, the appellate court here, kinda combined the two, but they had separate attorneys. But it's all about preemption. Preemption is when the state comes along and says, "It is in the, it is in the best interests of the people of the state of New York to take, the state will take the regulation", like issuing Title V permits. It's so complicated, it doesn't make sense for every little municipality to be issuing, you know, title, EPA Title V, federal permits. Takes, the state says, "We're gonna do this for you. We're gonna take care of it." It kinda makes sense. Uh, maybe regulating cer, certain, um, intrastate roads, state highways. The state says, "We're gonna take this over. You guys aren't gonna maintain these roads, we're gonna do it." That's a state preemption. It happens all the time throughout the law, and it makes sense a lot of times, state preemption. All I'm saying is, if you look up, by the way, it's so funny, the, the way I got onto this was by reading a letter by Thomas Fusillo, He's the attorney representing San Gil, works for, um, what's this big fancy law firm? Thomas Fusillo of... I got one particular law firm on my mind, that's two words, and this isn't the right one. He works for Barclay and Damon. And it's, anyway, 100-year-old law firm. And in one of his letters, he mentioned basically that, oh, the 2010, the 2010 New York State Rechargeable Battery Recycling Law made it very obvious that he's telling, he's arguing this to the DEC in one of these letters. He's like, "This law made it, made it very clear that the state wants to roll back regulations on this industry so that we can get the job done." So, I went and looked up, I looked up the law. The first thing I found was, is this state preemption. 2010 law, it's codified at... Most people call this the ECL, the Environmental Conservation Law. I don't know why Fine Law does it this way, it calls it ENV, but it's the ECL, Section 271811, state preemption. Go read it. Says, "Jurisdiction in all matters pertaining to rechargeable battery recycling is, by this title vested exclusively in the state, any provision of any local law or ordinance, or any rule or regulation promulgated thereto governing rechargeable battery recycling shall, upon the effective date of Section 271805 with this title, be preempted." So, whenever you hear Linda Jackson saying that she was adding special restrictions on recycling facilities, trying to be family-friendly here, but go tell her, that's bunk. And read to her, ECL, Section 271811, the Environmental Conservation Law, Section 271811, state preemption. So, don't be issuing any building permit. Don't do it. Don't be issuing a building permit while the protest petition is still being looked at. Don't do it. Village of Endicott Code Enforcement, don't issue a building permit. Something this complicated, you better take it to the planning board. Do a site plan review. I'm asking the Village of Endicott Code Enforcement people, Brian Botzford and, uh, Joe Griswold, please do a site plan review. I understand it's discretionary, I gotta look into it, but do a site plan review and see if you think that an incinerator meets the definition of a recycling facility according to this new law. Because if you get it wrong, you're gonna get sued. So, you should, I hope the Village code officers are paying close attention to this. And you should act wisely and in the interest of the community, the best interest of the community, and not in the interest of Stephen Donnelly, or San Gil, or anything of any kind of private entity. Even without the protest petition, this is very important, cuz they got really hung up on this. Well, we don't, you know, if the protest petition is valid, then there's a supermajority vote, a supermajority vote, and that means the vote on May 7th failed, three to two." My analogy is, you see somebody running down the street chasing a quarter, because they wanna, you know, they wanna buy something with the quarter, and you go, "Hey, man, is that the only quarter you got?" And he's like, "No, I got a quarter in my pocket." How much is the thing you want to buy? 25 cents? Well, why are you chasing that one? Because he's going through a lot of effort, and it seems really, you know, the quarter's gaining ground. It's a big hill. Doesn't look good like he's gonna be able to catch it. I'm like, "Why are you spending so much effort chasing that quarter when you got one in your pocket already? Go spend that." That's what this is. This is, that's my way of stating this, that. You spent so much effort, there was so much effort spent on that protest petition, but, I mean, look, from getting the signatures, to taking it to the engineering company and spending all the money, and we're still trying to figure the thing out. So much effort, so much effort. Why? In order to, the best possible scenario of the protest petition is that we, there becomes a supermajority requirement for the 5-7 vote. Guess what? You don't even need to bother with it. You don't need to bother with it. There is another supermajority requirement from General Municipal Law 239m, Subparagraph 5. What does it mean, Bill? It's all these big fancy 239m, what the, I can't understand what 23... Super simple. It's so simple, okay? Even a dummy like me, I don't have any credentials, or pedigrees, or anything like that. I'm just a regular guy, but, you know, I'm curious, and I like to read, and I like to research things. What this means is. This local law failed. They tried to change the zoning in order to permit a recycling facility. I'll call you back. Getting a lot of calls. 10 o'clock, I'll talk to you later. So anyway, in order to. According to GML 239m, Subparagraph 5. If the planning board, if the 239, if the county coordinated review, that this is kind of a synonym for coordinated review. If you ever heard me talking about a coordinated review, that's what GML 239m is. It's a coordinated review. Okay? That's what this is. And they never did a coordinated review on the facility. I said this in my comments. The amazing village attorney, I mean, I've not necessarily agreed with everything that he's done, but he did do one thing definitely right. And that was his, you get the timeline up. That was his, February 6th. February 6th, Bob McCurdy, the village attorney, wrote a letter to the DEC and itemized all of these amazing defects. I mean, I think he, I think clearly he was reading my stuff. Either that, or he's just a kindred spirit, or he's just a damn good lawyer, I don't know what. But he put a lot of the stuff. It's a great letter, his, Bob McCurdy's letter from February 6th. You can get it on the Dropbox. It's a great read, because he really covers a lot of ground in it. One of the things that he mentions is this particular issue. That. There were defects, I'm sorry, that. The DEC said that a coordinated review had been done in their notice of completed application back October. October 9th, 2019. A coordinated review has been done. No, it hadn't been done. They didn't do it. And when Joe, and sorry, when Bob McCurdy wrote to the DEC and called them out on this very issue, he got a response from Joe Slusar. If you've lived around here for a long time, you know who Joe Slusar is. He used to be the Broom County Attorney. And if you've watched my stuff for a long time, you'll remember him from the, remember when Inflection Energy wanted to frac Broom County Parks? And I did this amazing video in really short period of time, and then we had this huge meeting, and they shot it down. It was fabulous. It was really fun. But what's my, hold on. Joe Slusar was the county attorney back then. And he now works for the DEC. And when Bob McCurdy wrote him that letter in February, and said, "Hey, what about this? You said you did a coordinated review." Doesn't look like he did. Joe Slusar wrote back and said, "Oh, it's a typographical error. We meant to say that an uncoordinated review was done." Guess what an uncoordinated review means? It means we didn't do anything. It's like, hey, you know, you got a son, you go, "Hey, did you clean your room?" And he goes, "No, I did an uncleaning of my room." It's like, "What? What'd you say? What's that mean, uncleaning your room? Meaning you didn't do anything." Is that what you mean? You didn't do, you didn't do diddly. See what you mean? We did an uncoordinated review. What kind of, you know, this is just the kind of crazy language that you have to get used to when you're like, reading these DEC permits, because you find crazy stuff like this all the time. So go read it, General Municipal Law, GML 239m, Subparagraph 5. What does it say? It says, "There is a," what do they call it? It's not supermajority, they call it an extraordinary vote, which means supermajority. Four to one. There was an existing, I'm gonna say it's so simple so that anybody can understand, but this is, it's like, bleep, bleep. It's like, I wanna like, flash some big alert thing on the screen so that you can understand that this is super important. So let's do it like this. I guess I'm done with Claudia. Okay, so let's do it like this. Let's do beep. Okay, let's go. So we're gonna give you some urgent info. Right now, urgent info that Jeff Platsky isn't telling you, Chloe Vincente isn't telling you, God bless you, Chloe, you're not saying this. You know, Jessica Kisslick from Fox 40 isn't telling you this. You know, God bless you, Bob Joseph, Bob, nobody from WNBF is saying this, you know, Kathy White isn't saying this. This is urgent info. The only place you're gonna hear this is the Bill Houston Podcast, okay? That's why it's so important to please contribute to my work, because I can't do this work without your support. If you find what I do valuable, put something in my PayPal, or send me a check to the address up there, up there. This is urgent, super important info. That you're only gonna get here, okay? What's the urgent info? The vote failed. No matter what, no matter what, no matter the result of this protest petition, you don't even need to, you don't even need to do it. It's like Claudia says, if you're sincere about rolling back the law, then you don't even need to wait for the, for the report coming back from the engineering firm. What's their name? It's not Atlas. What is their name? You don't, you don't, so. "The protest petition doesn't matter one bit, 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 doesn't matter one bit. Protest petition does not matter one bit." Why, Bill? Why are you saying that the protest petition? Because the only thing the protest petition buys you is a supermajority requirement for the 5-7 vote. We've already got one. We've already got one. Already got one. And by the way. If the news media had any kind of curiosity about this, this is a big deal. This is a big deal to talk about. Because if you talk about this other additional reason for the supermajority vote on 5-7, you get a chance to talk about this list. You can go through the list. It's a super important list. I mean, who was it that was talking about the defects? There were several speakers tonight that were talking about the defects of this process, and they are right. All of the people that talked about the defects of this process, they are absolutely right. It's got problems all over every which way. Like, they needed to do the seeker before they even applied to the county for the 239 review. They didn't even do that. And Frank, you know, Frank, I don't want to get on Frank's case, okay? Because this is fabulous. But Frank made some mistakes in this thing. Everybody made mistakes in this thing, trying to push this thing through and rush it through for some, it's like, "We gotta do this during a pandemic? Wait a minute, shouldn't we be restricted to emergency business only? Or let's open things back up so we can get back to business?" Instead of all this insanity. What did Frank Evangelisti say? Well, maybe there should be a special use permit and/or a site plan review requirement. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. That's a really good idea. Okay? Why don't you add a special zoning category for shredding, smelting, and furnace or incinerator burning? That's another great idea. That's a fabulous idea. Thank you, Frank Evangelisti. You know, thank you. This is good stuff. Compliance with DOT Transport Guidelines, throw something in there as a requirement. Disassembling and, you know, let's break down what you mean by recycling. Frank figured it out. Frank figured out the con job, and he broke it out. That's, this is exactly what needs to be done. And he put it out there, and they ignored it. The village ignored it. And guess what? This triggers a supermajority vote. This is what I'm trying to tell you people. GML 239m, Subparagraph 5, go read it. Somebody go read this for me. Somebody go read this. Beep, beep. Urgent info, urgent for Endicott. All village residents are urged to listen to this important information right now on the Bill Houston Podcast. I should like, hack into the emergency response system and, you know, spam everybody's cellphone in Endicott with this urgent bulletin. And what are we saying? We're saying. The vote failed. May 7th, they did this half-assed goofy kind of mixed up, what is it? Oh, nothing. Is that an incinerator? No, 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 no. What is it? It's just a, it's just a recycling facility. Yeah. You want to put a recycling facility in Endicott? Yeah, 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 yeah. And it's not an incinerator, is it? It's not, I didn't hear a clear yes or no. Is it an incinerator, or isn't it? The vote failed. The vote failed. Is this thing on? Hello? Hello? Can anybody hear me? Anybody out there? Hello, hello? Even without the protest petition. The zoning, the attempt to change the zoning failed. This facility is dead. DOA. Go home, San Gil. You tried, we denied you according to the zoning. We denied you access to the village. Go away now. Go away, San Gil. The vote failed on the 7th. We don't need to wait for any, we don't have to wait. Because the village ignored the protest petition. Which triggered a supermajority vote. I'm done with that. I'm going past it now, people, but that's the most important thing in this whole presentation. I hope somebody out there understands what I'm saying, out there in internet land, TV land, somebody hears me and moves on this. Get this into the media. Call all of the media outlets, call your media contacts, and get them to print this. Because they're all ignoring it. Because they're all working for Stephen Donnelly. All the local media is working for Stephen Donnelly, and they are hiding the truth from you. They're hiding the truth. Donna Lupardo is working for Stephen Donnelly. Why did Chris Whalen, her PR guy, why did he make the trip to Owego when Stephen Donnelly, sorry if my voice is too hot? Why did Chris Whalen? I'm trying not to shout. Why? Somebody explain to me why Donna Lupardo's top chief of staff, or whatever, traveled to Owego, the next county over? Maybe that's Donna's district? I don't think it is. I don't think it is. The assembly districts are pretty small. There's a lot of people in the assembly. What's the number? Why did Donna Lupardo's PR guy travel to Owego for the opening of Stephen Donnelly's new office, along with the county executive, and the deputy county executive, and a lot of other important people? Stephen Donnelly is the PR guy working for San Gil. He's connected to everybody here, okay? So. Call the media and get them to print the vote failed on 5-7. They don't need to screw around anymore with the protest petition. I hope you understand, okay? The DEC permit, or the, so here's, here's something, okay? The DEC revoked the permit on May 20th. Well, why did they do that? Well, because John Ruspentini and Paul Connet were very good in that they raised this PFAS issue to the DEC, and they got them because of all their fancy letters after their name, the XYZ LMNOP, whatever it is. All their fancy pedigrees, and degrees, and certificates and things. And they're all so professional, so you can trust what they have to say. They got, they convinced the DEC to withdraw the permit and fix the PFAS issue. Guess what? I just want to point this out. I don't want to get too off track, because I've said this before. What's going on with that, with the PFAS issue, and man, he, Paul loves to, I mean, I love Paul. I'm a big fan of Paul's, but all he knows is the chemistry. So every time he gets on, he starts ranting about the, you know, chemistry and all the terrible things. If you're not arguing in such a way to get you a path to an environmental impact statement, you're blowing hot air, Paul Connet. You should shut up and give the stage to somebody that does know how to get us to an environmental impact statement. And maybe you should stop shouting them down, Paul Connet. We need a pathway to an EIS, and this PFAS thing that everybody's bought into, Donna's bought into it, you saw, if you watched the Hot Mic video, she kept going, "PFAS, PFAS, PFAS." I'm like, I don't. That ain't my thing. You're not hearing me. I'm talking about a Type 1 seeker review. I'm talking about a coordinated review. This was our rights under law. We were denied our due process. This is serious business. We were denied an environmental impact statement. Let's get an environmental impact statement, then let's talk about PFAS and the water impacts that my friend Terry is always bringing up. She's running for Broom County Legislature, Terry Farrell. And I don't really get into politics, but, you know, I really don't. But Terry Farrell, I don't care what political party she's working for, she's running under, I would vote for her, Terry. She's a great human being, and she's very knowledgeable, she's very smart. She knows a lot, I mean, she's got, I'm not even gonna tell you her whole story, but anyway, why did I get off on Terry? What did Terry say? The DEC permit is, oh, we were talking about PFAS and the pathway to an EIS. The DEC permit is, oh, we were talking about PFAS and the pathway to an EIS. Let's, let's chill out on the, on the chemistry and let's work out, work on the process issues right now, shall we? That's the most important thing. One thing that No Burn Broom could be helping me with right now is by pushing out my video about Donna Lupardo, uh, uh, her hot mic video. And show how she's like, don't you, you know, I asked her some of a question. Don't you think the DEC should follow, follow the law? She's like, I can't, I So guess what we can do? We can bang on her, on her telephone, melt her telephone and get her to write a letter to Basil Segos and say, "Hey, man, this, this stuff ain't right. This ain't working out." This uh, unlisted seeker action nonsense, okay? All right, so there's a ZBA appeal. There shouldn't be any building permits issued until the ZBA appeal is done. That should be on hold. That's for Endicott Code. I hope you're paying attention. Hope somebody from Code is watching this. The DEC permit, so that was the thing. Lynda Jackson was talking about all, you know, that they were gonna resend this, resend the special restrictions on recycling facilities because the DEC is doing such a good job. So let's tell you how good a job the DEC really did. First of all, this project was misclassified as an unlisted action from the beginning. This project must be a type one seeker due to the required zoning change impacting more than 25 acres. Remember, we have, you know, there was an express prohibition of incinerators in the Village of Endicott. So to put an incinerator here, they had to change the zoning. The zoning is, Endicott's industrial zone is 560 acres. That's greater than 25 acres. That means it has to be a type one seeker. End of story. Look it up. 6NYCRR 617.4B2. Go look it up. Due to DEC's initial error, we were denied our due process rights and our rights to a GML 239M coordinated review, which is required for a type one seeker, but with an unlisted action, they're like, ah, shut up, Endicott. You're just an unlisted. Get out of here. We, you're lucky we, we gave you what you got. So nobody did a coordinated review of the, of the facility. Remember in Fenton, it was 37 pages and there were six cooperating agencies. This time it should be seven. Let's see if I can name them. Two local municipalities, Vestal, Town of Union, uh, the DOT, the Department of Health, two school districts, Seton Catholic and Union Endicott Central and Broom County EMS. Seven. In our case, there should be seven. Nobody ever did it. Nobody ever did a coordinated review of the facility. DEC lied about it and said they did. They didn't. Uh, they lied in December on, I'm sorry, October 9th, when they said a coordinated, uh, notice of completed application, coordinated review. They said a negative declaration. There was an initial negative declaration, October, October 2, 2019, and then there was an amended negative declaration on March 27th. They both failed to identify one single unmitigated potential impact which would trigger an environmental impact statement. Now, this is pretty ridiculous because between No Burn Broom and Concerned Citizens of Endicott, together we have identified dozens of unmitigated impacts. Human health impacts, air and water pollution, road use impacts, risk of extreme fires that cannot be fought. You just gotta stand back. Risk of explosions, socioeconomic impacts such as loss of property values, loss of tax base, and other quality of life impacts. A positive declaration must be issued. Call Donna Lupardo, please, and say this. An EIS must be prepared. We need to get a legal process. We didn't. And thank you, Valdi Weiderpass of the Local Sierra Club, who has suddenly, I'm sorry, Valdi, it's a natural fact that, you know, you have been for this facility. That's the honest truth. And lots of people have gone to you for technical advice because of your position at the Sierra Club. Because Scott apparently directed everybody to you. Everybody was getting funneled into you. It's like, we wanna talk to some environmental group. They all talked to Valdi. I love you, Valdi. I treasure you as a friend. I appreciate your friendship and your support. But this is a big, but you have been for this. Valdi Weiderpass of the Sierra Club has been for this facility and I just now got him. I asked him again, I've been asked him several times to write to Donna Lupardo and ask for a legal process. And he did today. So God bless you. Thank you, Valdi Weiderpass of the Executive Committee, Vice Chair of the Sesquahanna Group, Local Sierra Club. God bless you. Thank you for finally hearing me on the process problem. Thank you. Now, in terms of an environmental impact statement, the DEC failed to identify just one unmitigated impact out of dozens that we've identified. We were denied a comprehensive environmental impact statement, which would have allowed us time to explore all these various impacts and consider project alternatives, including the no action alternative. Also typically, there's four public hearings that go along with a full EIS, starting with scoping. Draft final permit, okay? We got zero. By the way, let's just throw this in for some icing on the cake. We deserve, because considering all of the history that's happened here and considering this, all this has happened with this one, this process, where we were robbed of our due process with a bunch of shysters trying to come in here and pull the wool out over our eyes. We should get all of the protections afforded to environmental justice communities under Commissioner Policy CP29. I am tired. I gotta get a drink of water. I am really done for the night. Please subscribe to the Bill Houston Podcast on YouTube and I survive on donations and grants, so go to tinyurl.com/donatetobillhouston. And I gratefully receive donations in any amount. There's my snail mail. And there's my email. Where's my email? There's my email, so. And if you wanna see a summary of all the kinds of work that I've been doing in the last 10 years, just look for Bill Houston's fracking resume. God bless you all, friends. I'll talk to you later. Over and out.